Here.
Indra?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Victoria said that she'll be back in a few minutes. Seth?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Joel?
Here.
Kathleen?
Here.
Looks like we got a full house today. Okay, so, I'm gonna start today with workshop. We actually have a long day ahead of us, so... I'm going to impart on council and staff to be poignant to the point of the topic, and let's try to keep our stories in idle conversation down to a minimal, so we can get through this as quick as possible. We do have some good topics today, and I would really encourage council to stay on topic and keep this ball a-rolling. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. With that, we're gonna start with Main Street Grants Pass funding request. That was on the... Am I looking at the wrong agenda? Oh, I am. Sorry. The pink agenda, which I should've went off of, is public safety first. I apologize.
We could do however you like.
No, no, Aaron. I was looking at the previously printed one, that I printed on my computer, and that basically is wrong, so it's all good. Go ahead, Aaron.
All right. Great. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Here to talk about public safety and the addition of some additional full-time employees for additional services. I'm gonna go over background, our recommendation, and then other considerations for council, and then ultimately a call to action. So at the August 4th meeting, council directed staff to come back with a recommendation for increasing public safety full-time employees. Of course, the need, just as a review, we have an issue with increased workload over the years, which has created mandatory callbacks, increased overtime, mental and physical health of colleagues are challenging. Pay leave Oregon has also caused some strain within the organization. Recruitment and retention and time to onboard new hires are all challenges that we're dealing with, especially when we have such a lean program like we do here in the city. There's benefits to the discussion on why we're asking for additional FTE and why council is wanting to look at additional FTE, so I've got just some additional benefits here that are behind me. We will be seeing if we do have additional FTE, some improved community safety and crime deterrents, increased proactive policing and crime prevention, improved emergency and non-emergency response times, more consistent reliable operational coverage during OFLAC sick vacation and other absences. This would definitely increase staff morale and wellness, because it would reduce burnout and workload, improve our environment with less forced callbacks, which is important. Some additional benefits that we see also with this, if we move forward, is we'll be able to do additional training, compliance without backfill spikes. It'll increase our reliability of our service levels, increase relief capacity. We'll be looking at taking one step closer to an ISO rating Class 1. And we may see overtime savings per capita with this optimal approach, and there's two approaches that I'm gonna provide for council's consideration. And it would also, with the optimal approach, provide consistent three-person staffing at fire stations, and it would increase our depth with special teams. As I mentioned, there is two recommendations. The first is to add seven additional FTE, and why we came to seven is we came to seven to add one FTE per shift. There are four shifts in police, which will provide for four FTE, and there are three in fire, which will provide for three FTE, totaling seven FTE. The current cost, if they were all in right now, and we hired them tomorrow, would be one, a little over a million dollars. Of course, that would not be the full cost coming off of the first year, as it will take time for us to hire and onboard the seven additional FTE. But once you're all in, and if we were fully complete, we'd be looking at an impact of about a billion dollars. Staff recommendation number two is to add 12 additional FTE, full-time employees. This provides for increased proactive services. This would be our optimal recommendation. If council is interested in looking at two things, one, relieving the internal pressures that I talked about earlier on in the presentation, and providing for the most proactive services and increasing service levels, we'd be looking at adding 12 additional FTE. What would that consist of? It consists of six FTE in police and six FTE in fire. Current annual cost for that, if we were all in and we hired as of tomorrow, would be 1.83 million dollars. But of course, as mentioned in the previous slide, we'd not receive or actually realize that in the first few months easily, because it does take months to onboard and get people and get boots on the ground. Couple of things, just as future considerations for us to keep in mind also is this will require budgetary fund balance policy revisions in the general fund, as we're looking at pulling some of these funds from our contingency and/or our reserve funds, which will potentially lower the reserve fund policy, and that would be something that council would need to expect moving forward. Additional recommended FTE will impact next year's budget fund balance, as we mentioned, either 1 million dollars or close to 1.8 million dollars, depending on what option you go with. Just to give you a perspective, 2 million dollars equals a 5% change in our current fund balance policy. We currently have a fund balance policy of 25 to 35%. If we went from a general guideline of trying to think, well, we go to 20 to 30%, that'd be a reduction of 5%, which would equal about 2 million dollars. Staff is planning on bringing financial policies back to city council as a precursor to next year's budget process, sometime in January 26 through March of 26. We do believe with the additional FTE, it will impact next year's budgetary fund balance to an estimated 15 to 20%. We know we're gonna have some difficulty meeting the current financial policies as projected in the budget. With additional draw on the general fund, we may be looking at projecting a 15 to 20% bottom range of our fund balance policy. Just some other projections that will be needing general fund in the future. Addressing our homelessness grant, we currently have a grant that's out there. It's for 1.2 million dollars. The dedicated resources for that primarily is general fund. We'd be probably pulling that from contingency or other projects. So we're looking at maybe a draw of 1.2 million dollars in addition to what we're talking about today. Caveman Pool and where we want to go with that, we're not quite sure, but there is not enough dedicated funds to do some of the major repairs that's needed at the pool, so you may need to be looking at drawing some general funds there. And then ultimately, future capital for a fire station is one of the biggest Knicks ticket items that we see that may require general fund backing and a credit rating, when we may need to go out for a general obligation bond for a new fire station or an updated fire station at Hillcrest. Today's call to action is at council's discretion. There are two levels of service that we're recommending to move forward with. There's a recommendation number one, which is more of the minimal, will provide seven FTE, one per shift. We're looking at that being about a million dollars. And then there's the optimal for additional levels of service that would be realized. That is recommendation number two, and that's at about 1.8 million dollars. From a financial perspective and fund balance perspective, we could do two things moving forward. If council says yes, let's do option one or option two. We could establish through this discussion also a hard limit to budgetarily stay above, say for instance, 20% or 15%. Or we can see how the hiring process goes over the next few months and reevaluate the financial policies within the budget process, which is what we recommend, so we're not stuck with something. So we think if we move forward and council says yes, let's do recommendation one or two, that's excellent. We'll move forward with that, and then we'll have future discussions when we know how that's actually playing out when it comes to what our future budget policy may be. And level of service changes can be affirmed if you wanted to do so quick enough. By September 3rd's business meeting, we could put something on there that would provide us with a resolution and direction to do as according to today's meeting. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions from council? I have Rob, and then Joel and Kathleen.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. So, could you go to slide six? So, when it says increased readiness for ISO Class 1, we were told, if I remember correctly, from Chief Sanchez, that an ISO Class 1 rating would likely, would potentially reduce homeowners' fire insurance by roughly 4.5% and commercial by roughly 8.5%. Am I remembering that correctly?
Of Chief Sanchez, chiming in on that.
Thank you, councilor, for that question. So it was about 400, the average is about $430 per assessed for private residence, per $100,000. And then the commercial was, on average, was about 8.5%. So $430 per $100,000 assessed private, 8.5% commercial.
Okay.
Per increase, so if you go from a two to a one.
Right. Okay.
National average.
So my memory was pretty close on that, really, within small decimal points. But the first, this is the first time I've seen this word on that. It said increased readiness for. So what does readiness mean?
So when you're increasing, there's a standard. You come in and you get graded on water supply, personnel, your response times, the apparatus that you have, like you guys have done a great job, and we have a truck here, and that's part of the grading. So while we are going and we're increasing, we're gonna come back and have another review. ISO is gonna come in and have another review, and with the increase in personnel and the people that you are able to supply immediately in a structured fire is a big grade. So having that extra personnel, three per engine, will give you that ISO readiness faster than anything else with the extra personnel.
Okay, so when you say three per engine, the lower, Package 1 does not include three per engine at three stations, does it?
No, sir.
That would be three per engine. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is that, or let me ask, is that three per engine at one station?
The lower Package 1 is the step into it. Package 2 would provide us the more, more often than not, three per engine.
So, but again, so would Package 1 be typically, typically, on a fully staffed day, would that be three per engine at one station and the two per engine at the other two? Is that what Package 1 would be?
That would be our current, yes, our current staff. It wouldn't change our current. It would be three at Parkway and two at Hillcrest and two at Redwood. If we only do three, sir.
So it's three at Parkway now?
Yes, sir.
Before we do anything. Okay, so if we add, if we add the three, what does that get us then? I'm a little confused.
It helps with the burnout, so the overtime, so the sick time, the Oregon paid family leave, and the time that our employees are taking off, plus with their vacation accruals, it would help supply another person off during that time. So I would have to, it would lower our overtime and our callbacks. It would lower the forced hires, but very minimally.
Okay, so getting back then to my question on slide six, if I understand what you just said correctly, then when it says increased readiness for ISO Class 1, actually Package 1 wouldn't do that at all, because it's not adding any more firefighters per engine. It's just reducing callbacks and overtime, but it wouldn't actually add more per engine. Is that accurate?
That would be accurate, sir.
Okay, so Package 1 does not increase really our readiness for ISO Class 1, only Package 2 would?
Yes, sir, but it's closer. The reason is this stepped approach, so that's why you have one and two. So the stepped approach that we brought together with the city manager is that it would increase our overall readiness by adding more people, however, the true effect in service, level of service, would be Package 2.
I'm glad that I clarified that, because I was of the opinion, or I was of the impression, I should say, that, I was under a different impression. Okay. So, a couple of other questions, and maybe for Aaron, I'm not sure. So slide number eight, when we have a cost, or cost of, or seven, doesn't matter, same question for both. When, let's say, Package, slide number eight, recommendation number two, annual cost 1,800,000. Does that include offsets for overtime or not?
No.
So the cost would actually be less than that, because we've been, we've been assuming all along that this is going to reduce our overtime, et cetera, et cetera. So it would be less than the 1.8 million. Is that accurate, or am I?
Well, this is the cost, this is the cost to actually put on the books, the additional 12 FTE.
And the cost that it will actually cost us, though, if we're gonna reduce, if the plan is to help reduce overtime, it actually should be less than this. Is that not right? JC, maybe, somebody?
That's tough to say. You know, we're gonna reduce overtime per capita. So what I mean by that is individual overtime, I think, based on people will reduce. We'll be able to reduce the usage of overtime. But there's also gonna be additional individuals that will be taking on overtime to some degree. So I don't know if there's a way that we actually can budget or represent that with these numbers that we're talking about.
Okay, well, that was, that was a selling point the other day, when you guys were presenting last time.
Yes.
That we were gonna, we were gonna reduce our overtime, the dollars spent for overtime. There was no talk of per capita. There was just, we're gonna reduce certain amount of overtime, and now today, we're hedging this. I don't understand why.
Good question. It's hard to estimate a dollar for dollar. So just adding a dollar in FTE doesn't mean you're gonna reduce the same dollar in overtime. So it's a fraction of the actual dollars that you're seeing. So it's a fraction of the actual dollars that you're seeing as far as the FTE costs here and the realized overtime. And again, you don't necessarily know what the calls for service may be. So if we have additional paid leave Oregon family leaves and/or just, sorry to say, a higher crime rate of major crime, certain things increase our overtime back to a similar level, so.
I understand that there's a million variables. We could have natural disasters. We could have incredible need for extra public safety next year. I'm just trying to understand, last time, we were sold that this was going to reduce our overtime costs. There was no talk about, you know, everything that you just mentioned. And I guess the question, the answer, the question was yes or no, is this going to reduce the amount that we, is this very likely to reduce if all other things were the same, or the amount that we spend in overtime? And I still don't have any kind of clear answer today, unfortunately.
I would guess that yes, the overtime cost would go down, what that cost shrinkage would be. I wouldn't necessarily bet as far as a dollar amount what that could be. This is the flat cost before overtime is adjusted on the, on any individual.
So I can speak on our behalf, if that's all right, if you want that, the numbers I gave for the calculation?
Absolutely, thank you.
So they're very conservative when I gave them, but it was based off of the number two. So we were estimating a little over $1 million. The conservative amount of savings that I gave was 20%. So the total cost was about $700 and change versus it costing a million. So there will be a savings overtime. And the reason I say that is because my minimum staffing, in terms of the fire department, will not change. So that doesn't mean that I'm going to increase the minimum staffing to nine, for instance, every day to where that, essentially, I would save nothing. My minimum staffing would still be seven, but we're adding these bodies to it. We're adding these FTEs. And so we would save a minimum of 20%, I would realistically.
Appreciate that, succinct and very understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joel and then Kathleen.
So again, remind me, because I forgot, the ending balance for the general fund is projected, and we projected at the beginning of the year, and that's what our policy aims towards. What was the actual ending balance last year in terms of percentage?
Looking at about 38%.
38%.
Budgetarily, we drew that down for the maximum appropriation authority of 25.54%.
Right.
Which is right above the 25% minimum.
Yeah, so if I can interpret what you just told me, our remaining balance last year was at 38%, though our projected balance was?
25.
25. So we were 13% above our projected balance.
I would say it differently. We have a structural imbalance of potentially spending more than we are bringing in.
I understand.
And we have.
That's if we have full employment and everything that we have budgeted, we pay for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
So I was curious to confirm, was it, is it true that it's quicker to hire firefighters? And is the, is the, does the firefighting have the most overtime?
So on the, on the hiring process, I'll answer that. I'm not sure about the most overtime. Maybe we can pull that up and see, but, and the, it is quicker to onboard a firefighter than it is to onboard a new police officer. So yes.
As far as the overtime costs, the budget of the police is double the budget of fire, so you're not looking at a like-for-like dollar in overtime either because of the staffing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the efficiency of what we need to hire first, since they're both equally important. It's like, what is the, what gives us our, our outcome, our best outcome?
Well, in proposing both, we're looking at it from a service level perspective and the needs of the, of both departments. And of course, we've got the Level One and the Level Two recommendation. With either one, they're both, they're both needed, and we would be hiring concurrently if council gave us that direction. So if council said, yes, hire whatever Level One, Level Two, we'd immediately start to open up that recruitment process.
Thank you. Victoria?
Can you speak again? I think you did, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing it correctly. The difference between the contingency between option one and option two?
So option, option one provides a use of just over $1 million for the seven FTE for us to bring in. Now, that's under full load. And as we were talking about, it takes, it'll take a couple of months to bring people onboard, but once we were able to recruit for all those open positions, we'd be looking at an impact of just over $1 million. If we were to do the, what's considered the optimal, which is to add 12, we'd be looking at a draw of $1.8 million resources needed in order, under full load.
So each million is like, did you say 5%?
Yeah, 5%. If you took our current 25% to 35% of fund balance, and you took and reduced it by 5%, that represents $2 million.
Okay, so 5% is 2 million?
Yes, 5% is 2 million.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Eric?
Okay, so for recommendation number one and recommendation number two, can we, can we go through some of the highlights of as far as how we came up with the numbers, recommendations for the police and fire, for those two areas? Why we have four police, three firefighters, and then for the second recommendation, six and six? What was the, what was the rationale behind that? I guess is what I want to.
So in the discussions, we were trying to figure out what, you know, what our needs were to best impact the organization and the community, but realizing also the financial burden that that takes on. The bare minimum was recommended as one per shift. So that's why there's a four and a three, a four for police and a three for fire. This provides, the police have four shifts and fire has three shifts. So this provides at least one FTE per shift to help alleviate some of those things that we talked about for burnout, for callback, other things. That will help with that. Then we also looked at it from a perspective of service level and how can we up the service level game, provide additional services to the community, but also address the internal constraints and tension that we have. And that's where we came up with the six and six. This will provide an opportunity for fire to go to three to an engine across the three stations. And this would also provide the flexibility and the depth for police to be able to go above and beyond what we're doing now and increase some of our services and provide additional support to areas like detectives and et cetera.
Thank you.
Further questions? Victoria?
I just wanted to ask Chief Sanchez if option two will translate into those savings for fire insurance as you see it?
So this would be a giant step forward, and what we're working with right now, once those are in play, after everybody's in play and the FTEs are in position, then I would request a review from ISO, and they would come great as again. And I do believe, I can't, I don't have a magic wand, but I do believe we would hit ISO one. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Any further questions from council? All right, Seenan, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Joel?
Well, given that our, there's a big difference between our projected year-end balance and our actual year-end balance, and the truth is, we got to deal with the actual. I don't know what our insurance is based off of or the interest rates. It's probably the projected. But I would like to see us go incrementally and go with the more conservative approach and see what our year-end balance is next year. I could support either one, just the second one has a little more financial risk to the city. So I'd like, I'd like to just take it incrementally and monitor.
Further discussion? I got Victoria and then Rick.
I really appreciate the taking it a little, a little more slowly, but I also believe that if the benefit of going just a little bit more comes to everybody in the community through lowering their fire insurance, that that would probably be a better way to go. And I think that in all of our discussions of lowering the contingency, 5% is not so great that is going to put us into, into so much danger because we've seen that the difference between what we project and the actual is like 15% greater, or it has been historically, that I think the, going with option two is probably the better way to go because the benefit is potentially going to be so much greater, and not just for the city, but for everybody with fire protection, police protection, and the possibility, not can't guarantee it, as Chief Sanchez said, but of lowering people's fire insurance. So I think that option two would be the better way to go.
Thank you. Rick?
I also like Joel's comments, going, suggestion number one, incrementally, I believe we need option two, but I think it's going to take a while to get those positions filled anyhow, and would give us a year to look at it where we're headed. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Indra?
I, I understand going incrementally, but I think I prefer more option two. Public safety is the city's number one responsibility, and I feel like if we have to cut in other areas, we should do that to provide public safety for our citizens, which has been very lacking. So if we can reduce the stress and strain on our police officers on the streets so that they can in fact enforce the low-level crimes that are affecting our quality of life, I think that's a good thing, and the firefighters as well. But I would rather jump in, get what we need, and then look, budget for safety, public safety, and then in our next, next budget cycle, because it will take time to bring everyone onboard, look at if we have to make cuts elsewhere, then we do that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seth?
Yeah, I'm going to be in support of option number two. I mean, ultimately, realistically, this 1.8 is probably not going to hit this fiscal year, just with how long it takes to hire and process. And not to mention turnover that could potentially happen between now and the end of the year, just from natural, you know, people leaving and whatnot. So I would support option number two because I don't foresee the 1.8 hitting this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Eric?
I agree with a lot what was said up here. Option number two seems to be the better way to go. Public safety is very important, and there is always a lag in, in government when these type of things happen. So I think option two, the recommendation for option two is the better way to go for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I'm thinking that we will get rid of the overtime most efficiently with option number two, so I'd be in favor of that, too.
Thank you. I think everybody spoke at this point, so I'd be looking, going to ask one more time for any further discussion or action. Seth?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move forward with option number two. And as far as the financial policies, I think we should also do option number two, which is, you know, see how things progress over the next few months and reevaluate the financial policies within the budget process.
Okay, so Seth has give a recommendation for option two, call to action, as well as weighed in on the financial policy, and it's agreed upon by Kathleen and Victoria there. So any further discussion in regards to this? All right, let's just do a quick roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen, Victor, I mean, Indra, sorry.
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, so there's unanimous on that. Do you have direction?
Yeah, we have direction. We'll bring forward a resolution on the September 3 meeting for you to confirm that. And once that resolution is adopted, we will open those positions.
All right, thank you all on that. Next on the agenda today is Main Street Grants Pass funding request. So I will give the podium over to Dana. Yes, sir. Seth?
I'm going to step down for this, although I don't have any direct conflict of interest financially with Main Street. I just, moving forward, will not take part in discussion or votes for Main Street.
Thank you very much, Seth.
I'm Dana Pierce, Economic Development Manager for the city, and I just wanted to introduce the vice chair of the Main Street Grants Pass, Michael Lacoine. He's going to come up and provide a presentation. There was a previous presentation done on August 4, and he's got some answers to some of the questions council had.
Good morning, Mayor and city councilors. I want to start by thanking you for your comments, interactions on last workshop. That feedback has been extremely helpful, and it gave us a clear, accountable role to bring forward today. This is now our fourth time presenting in all actuality, and our goal today is to address the five specific questions you asked, show how our work aligns with the strategic plan, and a possible move from a workshop to a formal business meeting for a funding decision. First, we want to acknowledge the great progress the city has made recently with some of the events in our public and improving our, our public safety and improving our, cleaning up our streets. We, Grants Pass is on the brink of something great. Our role, our role once staffed, will be work with a true team with the city, not just as a group working in parallel to keep the momentum going. One of our biggest concerns, we hear from businesses currently and the property owners downtown, is a lack of direct communication with the city. Our focus will be help fill that gap, strengthen those connections, and ensure the needs and the ideas from downtown reach city and vice versa. And while we're not, and while we're doing that, our ultimate goal is to grow the city's franchise fees, property tax revenues by supporting stronger, more resilient downtown Last time we met, you asked us a few questions. One of the first questions was the balance of benefits between paying members and a wider downtown community. All downtown stakeholders will benefit from public-facing projects, beautification, economic development, and public safety initiatives. Memberships will bring added benefits like enhanced promotion, early grant access, business coaching, networking, and tenant recruitment assistance. We will formalize these in a benefits matrix, making it clear, transparent in all our bylaws. Next, event, event management. Another question was whether we'd take on the city-run events. Our current funding request is strictly for staffing and program development. We'll be focused on building out our flagship event, the cruise, to drive tourism, community pride, and a business activity. If there is interest in our involvement with other events, that would be handled separately through a MOU and would require funding outside of the staffing request. Nextly, you asked us for examples of other Oregon communities that are funded by, or really, communities are funded by the Main Street programs. Klammer Falls is probably our closest neighbor within size and location, and the city currently invests $88,000 a year annually and drives a strong downtown vitality and healthy return. Oregon City would be another city. Their city is involved with $280,000 a year, and that commitment has allowed them to take on major capital projects and expand tourism. That one has also helped fund through TLT dollars. We'll highlight that. Equally important are examples of McMinnville and Albany. While both of these have our long-run community involvement since the 80s, Oregon Main Street has only been around since 2007. They were incorporated long before that, have sustained huge economic growth, and are self-sufficient. So the proof is there that has a 501(c)(6) through membership drive, event management, that we can be self-sufficient over time. Across all Oregon Main Street network, the average ROI is 15:1. Every dollar invested by the city generates about $15 in value. This is across all Oregon Main Streets. And every successful program has one thing in common, a full-time executive director, which we're here for today. Our, there we go. Our, next would be staffing and planning. Out of the $100,000, we're requesting
Thank you, Michael. Council have any questions in regards to this topic? Rob?
Just very quick, I'm just wondering if there's a typo on successful Main Street examples page, a couple pages back. It lists achieved, for Klamath Falls, it says achieve 1.7 ROI with professional management. For Oregon City, it says achieve 1.5 ROI. And then below that, it says key takeaways for council. Main Street network averages 15.0 ROI. So that's 10 times the examples that you gave, and I just wondering if that's a typo, or I'm not sure how that-
That's numbers from Oregon Main Street on their average of all the businesses across throughout their Oregon Main Streets. I just, those were designated in our population size, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Indra?
Can you elaborate? You said your flagship event is the cruise. Can you elaborate on that? Like, have you done that before, or is, is that what you're working? How is that your flagship event? I guess is what I'm asking.
That is, our goal is to bring back the cruise downtown and the, the events around the cruise. That's our 2026 goal.
Is that the only 2026 goal?
That's our major event. Yeah, yeah, that would be our major event. It's a big one.
Go ahead.
Okay, and then, whoops, sorry. So you're asking for the monies, but the hundred, but then the total, your expenses are more than that. So are you planning to raise that extra money, or that's through membership, or?
That's through membership, raising private funds, sponsorship through events. Yes.
Okay.
The burden's not all on you.
And what would volunteers do? Because when I went to the meeting, you had a signup list for volunteers. What are, what is that for? And what are you, are you actively recruiting volunteers?
Yes, we're actively recruiting volunteers. Our first pillars meeting, which we call the Oregon, Main Street's organization are four pillars, and they'll, they'll, let's see, actually I got a little slide on that one. They'll cover economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. We'll create subcommittees from those, and help us, just as a working board, help us create up ideas on how to raise money, create events, design, so forth.
Okay. I, I don't know if you're aware, I had a friend that signed up for a volunteer at that meeting, and she's never been contacted, so.
She received, she received an email, and she'll receive another email today about our 25th meeting.
Okay. I just wondered if that was an active thing or not?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just one more question. You mentioned private donors will only donate if the city is financially invested. Why is that?
For success.
So you don't feel like Main Street can be successful if the city does not provide revenue to you? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Any further questions? Kathleen?
Well, it seemed to me that you, the membership was a big part of your financing. Can you, can you give us an update on that?
We're slowly trudging along. We haven't had the best membership drive right now. We're still trying to get, I think people are still a little, we're still trying to get the message out and, and drive that membership up. But I think with the full commitment from, from city and, and know the city's behind it, I think we'll be able to increase that membership greatly.
Any further discussion? Joel? And then Rick?
I was just curious if you would like, how many members do you actually have?
We currently have-
Presently?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Rick? Oh, no. Okay, any further discussion? Rob?
Just to clarify the answer to Joel's question, I know you have a bunch of different tiers or types of memberships. Can you give us specific, exact number of each type, or the difference between the types?
That we currently have? We have, we have three property owners at the $600 a year revenue, and then we have four business memberships, I think, at the $300, and then a couple of friends at Main Street.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Joel? And then Victoria?
Well, I, I'm not sure this is a pertinent question, but I'll ask it, and you don't have to answer. But how, how many of the members are actually board members of those seven or eight or nine memberships?
We have five board members that are members.
Five, five, so about half. Okay, thank you. So there's about four that are outside the board that are members?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Victoria?
Hi, thanks for coming back. I, you may remember last time, I, I'm a big fan of the program because of what I've seen happen in other cities. I just wondered if you could share, if you had been in contact with, say, Klamath Falls, that's the one that I know the most. So do you, do Main Streets, do they partner with other Main Street cities? Are there like regional meetings and such?
Yeah, actually in October, there's a regional, or Oregon Conference in Salem that some of us will be going to, where we'll be able to network a little bit more. Right now, we're really trying to get a sit down with McMinnville, because they're a proven C6, which really works off memberships and sponsored events to raise revenue, and that's kind of our model. So that, that's one we're trying to work on, and hopefully we'll get that connection.
Can you explain the C6 then a little bit, so?
Yeah, C6 on a nonprofit basically is more membership driven. We can't go out and raise grant funds per se for operational expenses. We can raise grant funds and redistribute, but we can't raise those funds for, for, for operational expenses. So we're really solely driven on memberships.
Thank you. So when you list Klamath Falls, McMinnville, and Albany as having ongoing successful programs, what does the membership of those towns look like? Do you have figures on that, just ballparks?
I don't, but that is a number I can get you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Eric?
Are you able to speak to specific examples in Grants Pass and talk about their success stories with your program?
Right now, we're just getting started. So I mean, our only success program right now is Partake and the $400,000 grant that was awarded. I mean, we're doing a pretty good job, I think, of helping co-promote First Friday and get some things going on there. And we've got a bunch of other stuff that we're working on, but nothing, I mean, we're, we're still only about eight months old, so.
Can you, can you go more into detail with Partake as far as what they, how they benefited, and how, basically why the program is so great for them specifically?
I'm sure, yeah. Partake bought the King Jewelers Building downtown, historical building, major rehabilitation that's been needed for that building. He was able to get awarded a $400,000 grant. He had to match 30% of that, but with the $400,000 grant, he's able to move forward with full plans on renovation of that building. Was that, did I answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions? Indra?
I guess, well, this one goes to probably Erin or maybe Dana. So I'm wondering, so the city has Economic Development Department and are doing the events currently. I, I understand Dana is doing the Art on the Road and organizing that, and I just, I guess, how, is it impossible for the department to spend hours connecting with businesses? Or are we having trouble communicating with businesses? Are we having trouble doing events that the community would like to do? If you could address that.
Yeah, let's see, is this on? No, it is, okay. Well, currently we are short staffed in Economic Development, but we are strong partners with Oregon, with the Main Street Grants Pass. They've done a lot of outreach so far with our downtown folks, and a lot of those merchants are really happy with having face to face contact. The purpose of our division really is to focus on the broader economic development, I would say. And even though downtown is obviously a key piece of economic development, and so is tourism, bringing people to downtown, we, it helps us to have boots on the ground, working directly with those merchants, while we can kind of do, do the broader work that it takes to bring in additional business and development. I think the Oregon Main Street Grant is a good example of how we can bring development to downtown. We can access those outside grant dollars, and the only way we can do that is through a Main Street program. So that is one benefit that this organization specifically does bring, is that those match dollars, an additional $400,000 invested in our community for an upgrade to a historic building. So there are, I feel like, positive benefits to having a relationship with Oregon, with Main Street, yes.
Further questions? We have Rob and then Victoria.
Very quick, you just mentioned Dana, that you're strong partners with Main Street. Okay, Main Street is eight months old, and doesn't seem like they are doing too much yet. So how does that strong partnership manifest so far?
Well, we've worked with Main Street from the beginning. So the way it all started was back, honestly, there was a technical assistance grant that Visit Grants Pass was awarded, where someone came and worked with the downtown area, so owners and merchants to, and did a, a study, and from that created the downtown roadmap. And that roadmap was presented to a whole group of folks, and I think, I'm pretty sure that Michael mentioned that in his previous presentation. But that's where everything kind of got launched, was at that initial meeting. We looked at the roadmap, looked at the results of all of that research that was done, and we asked the community, who wants to stand up and, and start a downtown organization? And we did have three different individuals stand up to do that. At that, and from there, we just supported that process. So we had individuals in the community willing to launch a downtown organization to support the downtown, and then, like I said, we just stood by them. We attended meetings and helped convene folks and get, helped with connections so that they could actually reach out and start building their steering committee. And they did that. They built a steering committee, we participated. We also participated even in the meetings about the formation. They were, they made their own decisions, of course, but we were there when they were deciding whether or not there were going to be a 501(c)(6) or 501(c)(3), and helping connect them to the right resources so they could help build the organization.
Thank you. Victoria?
Hi Dana, so there are some programs that if Main Street were to go forward, they would take some of the burdens off the city. I know in the last presentation, we had talked about that. You may have touched on it now again, and I just, I kind of missed it. But can you speak at all to those and talk about any savings, if any, that would happen for the city because of that?
I think that, I'm not sure if I'm understanding exactly what you're asking, but I, I think this, there would be cost savings over time. I think, you know, this initial ask is really to help launch this organization. And so as they get going, they won't have the, the need for our support, the city's support anymore. They'll get their operating funds through memberships, or through other sponsorships, or other types of grants, or private funding, however they'll, however they'll do that. But as this was a goal for the city council, we have tried to progress that. We have, we have been working on this for years to try and support that goal. And now we're here at that, that point where it's, you know, they're really asking for that support to launch.
Thank you. Any further questions? Indra?
So, I'm sorry, this is to Dana as well. You mentioned grants, they're the only ones that can do grants. Is that true? We don't do grants within the department, and I think we used to have a grant writer. We don't have one currently, but the staff can write grants, correct?
Yeah, that's true. Let me clarify, just the Oregon Main Street Grant, there's a very specific Oregon Main Street Grant, and that was the one that was awarded to the King's Jeweler Building. And that grant, we cannot access without a Main Street organization. But we can, you're right, the city can apply for other grants for various things.
Okay. And then you mentioned you're short a person. What was the role of that person? Did they not get out into the community? Did we not have anyone that did that, or is that what they did? And are we planning to rehire that position, or no, if we went with Main Street?
So yes, that person did spend a lot of time out in the community, working with merchants and downtown property owners, and helping with lots of activities downtown, running the, the city events, numerous things related to the tourism activities. We think we are relooking at rehiring, our focus, if, if we were to support downtown Main Street, the Main Street Grants Pass, we'd focus our energies slightly differently within the department is, and that's something that we haven't had a chance to discuss yet. So I guess I should probably stop talking. I don't-
Yeah, we've always had a strong connection with downtown merchants and tried to be a business advocate for them, and, and our economic specialist was a, a key piece to helping move this along. We think it's important to have that, that communication there. The Main Street program would only bolster that opportunity for us to be able to have a, a relationship with the downtown merchants. And, and they do have the ability to apply for different grants than we do. They have the ability to take a grant and go for a specific business. Where we have to be with our grants a little more generalized with our grants, and provide opportunities for multiple individuals and businesses to apply, Main Street can, can focus on different types of grants also that the city really can get involved with, and that's one of the benefits of the, of that Main Street program.
Further questions? We got Victoria, Rob, and then Joel.
Is that Main Street grant that Partake was the recipient of annual?
It's every two years.
Rob and then Joel.
So Erin, I'm not sure, maybe you misspoke, maybe you're, maybe you're accurate. You said that Main Street has the ability to apply for different types of grants, plural. Michael said today that they actually can't apply for any grants except the one, the, the every two year Main Street grant, which is, which is accurate.
No, that, that's not accurate. We, we can't, we can't apply for grants ourself for operational expenses. We can outwardly apply for grants for other businesses and help people out. So, but for us to apply as a C3, we can't go out and apply for a grant for our internal operational expenses. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, okay, so when you say you can apply for grants for other businesses, I'm not sure if I quite understand that, other than, other than-
T-Mobile grant, like one we're, we're still trying to apply for, it's a beautification grant. We can use that to beautify the downtown, clean awnings or something like that. The revitalization grant, we can't apply for that to operate our biz, operate a Main Street.
Got you.
So, does that make sense?
Got you, thank you.
Okay.
Joel?
and provide opportunities for multiple individuals and businesses to apply, Main Street can focus on different types of grants also that the city really can get involved with. And that's one of the benefits of that Main Street program.
Further questions? We got Victoria, Rob, and then Joel.
Is that Main Street grant that Partake was the recipient of annual?
It's every two years.
Rob and then Joel.
So Erin, I'm not sure, maybe you misspoke, maybe you're accurate. You said that Main Street has the ability to apply for different types of grants, plural. Michael said today that they actually can't apply for any grants except the one, the every-two-year Main Street grant, which is accurate.
No, that's not accurate. We can't, we can't apply for grants ourself for operational expenses. We can outwardly apply for grants for other businesses and help people out. So, but for us to apply as a (c)(3), we can't go out and apply for a grant for our internal operational expenses. Does that make sense?
Okay, so when you say you can apply for grants for other businesses, I'm not sure if I quite understand that.
So T-Mobile grant, like one we're still trying to apply for, it's a beautification grant. We can use that to beautify the downtown, clean awnings or something like that. The revitalization grant, we can't apply for that to operate our business, operate a Main Street. So, does that make sense?
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay.
Joel?
So historically, the special events were not funded by the city? Is my understanding, is that correct, Dana?
That's correct, although Art Along the Rogue, we have historically had ownership of Art Along the Rogue.
So the Christmas tree, the car?
Fourth of, we currently do three events, Art Along the Rogue, the Christmas tree, and the Fourth of July celebration.
Fourth of July fireworks. So would you anticipate taking over that? One of the hardest things for government to do is, once they start supporting something, it becomes etched in stone. And we're at the point where the strain on the general revenue can't support it. And that's just a fact. It doesn't mean that your organization's bad or whatever. But as we move forward, what's that? So the question is, as we move forward, would we anticipate then the amount of city support for these special events? Would go back to where it was previously and not be any?
I think that's open for discussion. That's not what we're here asking for today, though.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Erin's gonna put up, thank you, Michael. Erin's gonna put up on the screen a call to action slide. So I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Indra.
I'll start. Thank you for coming back and answering all of our questions. I guess for me, in a perfect world where we had tons of money, I would be a yes for sure. Why not try it? But we just committed to a large amount for our public safety, and that's where my heart is, for the safety of our citizens. And so I know we're going to have to be making cuts in other areas. I feel like with Visit Grants Pass that we have going, our Economic Development Department, I feel like that we can do all those things with the budget that we have within our city and do them well. I feel like we can do that. So I'm, I would, maybe next year, when we see the financial impact of public safety, I think for now, bringing people into Grants Pass for tourism is a little bit detrimental until we get our encampments gone and the people off the street and our businesses can go. Because I really feel like bringing people in, and I've heard this from people, is detrimental right now to us because they look around and say, I don't want to be, come back. When I see what I see, it's sad. And so in a perfect world where we had money, I would be a go. But we're really overstepping, we're taking a risk with our budget, and I feel like we really need to watch what we spend money on. So I would not be recommending to move forward.
Any further discussion? Rob? And then Kathleen.
Yeah, and I had some discussion. I probably should have asked part of it as a question. But so JC or Erin, the current Downtown Services budget is roughly $634,000? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I think that's pretty close.
Okay. So, and just, I'm just gonna read from the budget book, page 158, I think it is. "The Downtown Development Program promotes and enhances a vibrant commercial and cultural district with supporting infrastructure, maintenance, security, information exchange, marketing, and promotions." And I'm just wondering if staff has any suggestions as to what could possibly be cut out of that $634,000 to possibly be able to support Main Street? Because it would seem like the Downtown Services budget is exactly where this money should come from. It seems that way to me. So does staff have any suggestions as to where in that Downtown Services budget we could fund Main Street?
If you're looking at wanting to fund that and fund it through that program, I'd be more than happy to come back to you with a full assessment of those funds, where they currently are allocated, and how we may be able to utilize any of those funds from a potential reduction in services as described. But at this point in time, I think it would require a little bit of time for us to put that together for you to come up with and identify $100,000.
Yeah, and most of that operational cost that you're talking about of the Downtown Development Budget is actually more geared towards the maintenance of the hardscapes of the parking lots and alleyways. There's a small piece of that that is the welcome center and what it provides as far as the downtown presence for economic development. So any additional right now would be a shift in how we currently operate that program and would potentially require more general fund resources.
So right now, this would require just additional funding out of the general fund. And as of today, we don't have any suggestions for where in the Downtown Services budget it could come from, just be additional. So if Main Street is deemed in some way responsible for bringing, increasing hotel stays and overnight things of that nature, couldn't some funding come out of tourism if we had overnight stays?
Sure, if you can find the direct linkage to tourism. I think, based on how I read the proposal, it's more of an economic development, which, again, could spill into. But I don't know if it's directly promoting people coming from more than 50 miles to visit the downtown.
Anytime there's hotel stays, usually, I guess that's the second part of, there's the 50 mile, the hotel stay is usually the measuring, usually the metric they use, whether or not someone came from more than 50 miles, I think. So, to me, I guess, as a counselor, it seems like, you know, funding for this, if it's going to come from anywhere, should probably come from either Downtown Services or tourism rather than an additional burden to the general fund. But I have something else to say, but I'll let someone else speak now.
Yeah, I do want to just point out, too, that of the Downtown Development Budget, it needs general fund money to keep that $600,000 going.
Thanks, Rob. I got Kathleen and then Victoria.
Well, I agree, and I'm following what my colleagues here have talked about. And as we heard in the last presentation, there is a burden on the general fund right now. And considering what we have to decide a lot of today, so I would like to postpone or table this and maybe see how it goes with memberships and other funding opportunities before the city commits. Thank you.
Thank you. I got Victoria, Rick, and then Rob. So Victoria first, please.
So I believe that we need to also put monies into our businesses. And I think Main Street has already shown that it is able to bring a great deal of money to Grants Pass. It has also shown, the program itself has been able to translate in other cities very well. So I would be in favor of funding Main Street with the funds that they are discussing. But I also agree with my colleagues about the drain on the general fund. So with finding in the budget other sources that might not put a strain on the general fund, I think that I would be in favor either way. Because I think $100,000 to, this isn't exact, to bring $400,000 into our community is a really good way to spend the city's resources and the people's resources. But it would be better if we didn't put the strain on the general fund. So I would also be in favor of looking at that, too. But I think they do great things, and I think they could translate into doing amazing things for downtown and for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I got Rick and then Rob.
Some time ago, I took a tour with Main Street, which included Partake and the project they have going and other second-story projects. And I was impressed at the activity that's going on down there. I would hate to see the opportunity for further development downtown go away. If Main Street is instrumental in having that happen, I would like to see some form of endorsement of them. And if the council did not find that they are comfortable with the full amount, I would like to see if there's an opportunity to have a different allocation, a different amount that could possibly be cost shared by other people in the community or something to make it happen. But to still make the program go forward, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Rob?
So, you know, lots of times, council gets emails or ideas from the podium, from the public, that the public, the member public or the emailer, you know, thinks they're just common sense. And then we, sometimes they get an explanation from legal or whatever. The 15 reasons is we can't do common sense, you know. So, but before, you know, as a counselor, I was basically saying where I think that the money should come from. Rather than additional burden to the general fund, I think if we can economize somewhere else, whether it's tourism or whether it's other parts of the Downtown Services budget, I think that's where the money should come from. And then one other quick question, there's no dollar asked on today's call to action. What is that dollar associated?
It's based on their proposal. I believe they have, if you look at the proposal...
It was $80,000, I think, from last time, right?
What's that?
How much was it last time, first year?
Well, this time, it's $100,000 first year, second year is 90, and third year is 80.
Okay, so it's $100,000 first year. So right now, I'm just gonna, just for a moment, I'm gonna speak. Rob Q. Public is gonna just give a common sense suggestion. And to me, this would be win-win-win. And it's kind of, would kind of be up to Seth or Michael or somebody else to convince the parties to make this happen. But, you know, we had the hilers, the owners at Partake, only because they had an affiliation with Main Street, they got a $400,000 grant towards their, you know, seven or eight or $900,000 project. And, you know, to me, I'm not exactly sure why Main Street would give one single business $400,000 and leave the organization, so to speak, you know, drifting with no funding. So to me, what would make sense is, and again, this is Rob Q. Public speaking, it's not a counselor speaking. But to me, I think that someone should suggest to the hilers that they give a tax deductible deduction to Main Street for $100,000 for their first year's operation. That would allow Main Street to hire the executive director they want. The executive director could then dial in some events, could do sponsorships. The downtown merchants and property owners could then see that there's value there, and they would join, there'd be memberships. And then the council in a year could actually see, oh, this is an ongoing operation that makes sense, and they deserve our support because they're, you know, they're really working well, and they're doing it. And people, and most importantly, our downtown property owners and merchants support them. So the hilers there would still be up, and even though it wouldn't come directly from those funds, the hilers would still be up a net of $300,000 for their association with Main Street. And Main Street would get what they need, their executive director, and the public would get some action for a year, and we'd get to see if they can actually do a good job. So to me, that's win-win-win, it's common sense. And again, like a lot of common sense ideas, when they get to council chambers, we're told why it can't possibly happen, why the common sense doesn't apply here. But I believe it does. It would be up to Seth or Michael to basically convince the hilers, that would be a good move. And the hilers, I would think, would, you know, be possibly amenable to it because they would have to believe in Main Street. They did so well with it once. It'd be a couple of years before anyone else is eligible for that kind of grant. But that's, to me, the common sense here, what should happen. Everybody could win, the hilers would still be up $300,000, and everyone else wins. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? Okay, any further discussion or action? I know a lot of you guys have put forth some opinions here, but it's incumbent on you guys to direct staff and everybody in a direction forward. Victoria.
Well, I would like to move to direct staff to give us alternative funding from the budget for the full amount for Main Street and bring that to us at the earliest possible meeting.
Okay, has been recommendation from a council member to have staff look into alternative avenues of funding for this? Is anybody else interested in that? Eric, Rick, we got three people on board with that. Do you have direction, Erin?
Yes, I do, thank you. We'll provide that and schedule that for a future workshop.
So with that on the table, I don't think we've actually addressed the topic at hand. So I would look for other action. You had a slide up on there for a call to action to either approve, disapprove, or set this further, for further discussion in an upcoming workshop. You just gotta further define. You asked for one thing, I'm just clarifying.
Well, I think I was asking for the full, the full funding, but we do want to see alternative budgeting ideas.
And do you want to push this to a further...
And I would like that to be...
Just trying to keep, if the topic stays alive, the topic stays alive, it goes to a future workshop. If not, then just, we need to clarify that.
My clarification on the motion was that we're moving forward with providing you with an opportunity to fully fund their request based on alternative funding methods than general fund.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we have that clarified, and maybe that made a little bit more clarification for me. Joel?
Just a point of order, and however we decide this. But there was a motion, and we didn't vote on it. We had three counselors say that that's what they wanted to do, which is fine. And so the record needs to show there wasn't a motion, but we're gonna have a future discussion at another council workshop.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the way I understand it as well, Joel. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Michael, for presenting there. And Dana? Next on the agenda is addressing the homelessness grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Redwood Alley Activation Mural, the Committee on Public Arc Motion.
Yes, Mayor Council, there's not an official presentation on this. This was brought to us on Thursday or Friday of last week. And I think it was Counselor King that brought this to me. And so I'm gonna have him take it from here.
So basically, what it is, is it's a short-term opportunity that had a large savings, relatively large savings. Before, COPA brought before us a proposal, I think, for $15,000 for a mural, and I believe it was in the Redwood Alley. Since then, some individuals have made some inquiries. And the other existing condition that has happened, unfortunately, is the murals that are on the sidewalk on Fourth Street, down by the Owl Parking Lot, are going to be destroyed. Yeah, I talked with the smokejumpers about that, and they were disappointed. And some other folks have talked with the Indian tribe, they blessed it. And it's better that they know rather than just be shocked when it's gone. But there's an opportunity because the artist that was granted by COPA to paint those is in town and is the artist for the Art Along the Rogue. And she offered to paint all three murals on the Redwood Alley for $6,000, which was a reduction of $9,000 over the previous bid. So it's less than half. And then, since then, I've, we've gotten some private donations that probably with our remaining of $3,000 now. We certainly all know the drain on the, on the, so the question then is, it's a good thing to do, it helps tourism, it satisfies what has been previously done to those interest groups. It's part of our heritage, it's Glenhold Ridge, it's the local Indian tribe, it's the smokejumpers. Go to the smokejumper base, by the way, it's a great, great place to go. With that, the drain... to go. With that, the drain, even $3,000, I think, is a drain on the general fund, is not appropriate, given where we're at. And so, I know the city has, has taken the stance that tourism dollars cannot be used for murals, though the original funding for the murals on Fourth Street were from a grant from the Tourism Advisory Committee, if I got my facts straight. If I don't, somebody correct me. And so, whether tourism dollars can be spent or not, the city has taken a fairly firm position in the past, and probably with some good reason. On the other hand, some of the murals in the, in the city have been posted on tourism advertisements that advertise along the I-5 corridor. Welcome to Grants Pass mural, for example, that actually attract people from the outside. So, and, so the issue before us today is, do you wanna sponsor with money? COPA said they wanted to support it, they didn't wanna take the lead. Talked to Doug on the Tourism Advisory Committee, he was gonna talk about funding at his committee, but that's not until September or October, which would not be in a timely manner, because the artist is only in town for the next six weeks. Do we want to take some action and help support it, along with the private donations, and have a city partnership that would be up to $3,000? Or, do you wanna have private donations fund it, and not, not do anything? Dana, did I cover that appropriately and openly? She was at the presentation that we made, on behalf of the Historical Commission to COPA.
Well, at the last, at the last council meeting, council did review COPA's request, and, and there were options, and council at the time provided direction that if the mural was gonna take place, it could take place, but without city resources, and if the community wants to come together and put something together, then it sounded like council had no issues with, with going forward with the mural.
So, so one of the action items could be provide up to $3,000, or just stick with what you said before. Dana, do you have something to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. Anyway, you, you folks know what I know.
Questions? We have Rob and Kathleen.
I had a comment, I didn't necessarily have a question. Is there someone, is this appropriate time for comment?
Let's see if anybody has any questions for Joel at this moment in time, then we go to comments. Kathleen, question?
So, if I remember correctly, it was 15,000 for a mural that we were trying to vote on last time, and this time, you're, are you saying we only need 3,000 to supplement?
Up, up to 3,000 for a total of three murals.
Okay.
But money's money.
Question, Eric?
Yeah, so I don't know if it was mentioned of why we can't keep the current murals. They were tearing up the parking lot, I believe, right? And, I mean, is there a reason why those cannot be preserved?
So, they could likely be relocated, but when that whole project is rebuilt, the curb ramps have to be reconstructed on all four corners for all of the grades to work out. The best you could hope for is try to socket them out and relocate them, but they wouldn't be put into a sidewalk anywhere, you'd just display them somewhere, similar to what we did with the downtown tile murals that are at one of the parks now.
Would it be appropriate to, if we decide to go with, go ahead with the murals, to use those as well, to try to preserve them as good as possible?
We absolutely could. We'd wanna get it built into our spec pretty soon, so that the contractors are aware that they have to cut them out gingerly.
Any further questions?
I just had a comment on the question.
Rob? I mean, Rick, sorry.
Dana, was the presentation that COPA also mentioned trying to cut those out and relocate them, presented some challenges?
Yeah, we did do some research on that, and we were told that it was probably not likely that they'd be able to be cut out and remain intact, so we didn't feel like that was a viable option.
It's your presentation, so like, do you have questions?
Do you mind if I share one other piece about the original murals?
Go ahead, Dana.
Is that, do you mind, Mayor?
Go ahead, yeah, please.
Okay. So, the original murals that went on the sidewalk was through a grant, again, that Visit Grants Pass applied for, and it came from Travel Oregon, so those, those funds were an outside grant to pay for that, that piece. It was installed, as they said, and they also were really clear with Travel Oregon at the time that this space would be torn up. So, at least the grantor understood that this was a temporary mural. I don't know that that was communicated on to the rest of the parties, but originally, when Travel Oregon granted the funds, they, the purpose of it was really about stimulating an activity downtown, and the actual installation of the piece, so having people come and see it being done. And it was done, you know, in combination, it was done right around Art Along the Rogue, so that it could be part of that event. Just a little bit of background on that.
Thank you, Dana. Any further questions? I had Kathleen first, and then Indra.
So, Joel, when this originally came up, was there some talk about these murals going on the Welcome Center, but now it's changed to Redwood Parking Lot?
Not Redwood Parking Lot, it's Redwood Alley. Yes, there was, and it was deemed inappropriate to put on the Welcome Center, because it wouldn't fit in with the architecture, and rightly so.
Is it possible to use funds from Visit Grants Pass if we made an event out of it and invited people over 50 miles to come, and have the Indian Tribe bless it again, perhaps?
I guess I don't know the answer. That would be something that we'd have to talk to Visit Grants Pass about, whether it's something they could fund, or seek an alternative grant source for.
Any further questions?
Yes.
Okay, Ward, you do have an expertise in this area, so I'll allow you to comment.
Thank you for recognizing that. I know at the last workshop, COPA was allowed to speak, and as chairman of the city's Historic Building and Sites Commission, I think there's some important information here. One is that it's in our develop, the City Development Code, that it's the Historical Building and Sites Commission that approves all murals in the historic district. So, that's number one. And number two is that I did not attend the COPA meeting, but I listened to the two-hour meeting, and I know that the committee as a whole voted to support this project. And I'm old school when it comes to economic development, but believe me, when I look at $3,000 versus 15,000, I think, and you have the same artists that did the sidewalk murals, it's unfortunate they're being torn up. But I also know that I was on a subcommittee of COPA and Historic Commission members, along with, there's only one member left on the COPA committee that was also on that subcommittee, and she was very supportive. In fact, she came out very vocally that it was, she thought that the, this solves a lot of problems. It closes that project, it was a three alley project, two of them, one's been completed, one is in process, and will be completed soon, and this will be the third alley in that series of three, which means that project will then have been completed by the city successfully. So, I think saving $12,000 and getting three murals, typically the city pays a person 15,000 for one mural, so, and it's the same artist that did the art originally, so it seems like a win-win all the way. I also know that I have, that basically, there's a couple people in the city, maybe in our Economic Development Department, that don't think it would qualify for tourism dollars, but I differ with that, because I know when I put up, when I commissioned out of my own pocket, the Welcome to Grants Pass mural downtown, that I was told at that time by someone that it would not qualify for any city funding, and that murals did not qualify for tourism funding. And that person told me, talked to our finance director, he'll tell you, he's very familiar with how this all works. So, I did, and I called J.C., this was about three years ago, and he said, in fact, yes, murals like that, that are, and that mural is definitely historic and tourism-themed, that yes, they can qualify for tourism funding. So, $3,000 is a minor piece of money in terms of getting three murals and completing this project, and having the support of both COPA and the Historic Building and Sites Commission. And I would differ with our Economic Development Department, and say that there's a lot of proof out there, that there are many cities around the country that are using murals to promote tourism. And I just sent out an email to you all this morning, you probably haven't, some of you probably haven't seen it yet, but it was put out by Travel Oregon, which is the state's travel agency, okay? They oversee tourism in all the cities in Oregon, and I sent out an email to you, where Travel Oregon sent out an I-5 dining guide, so it's a restaurant guide to restaurants all along I-5, from Ashland to Portland, and everywhere in between. And what did they use as the illustration for their cover? The Welcome to Grants Pass mural. So, that's coming from Travel Oregon. So, that should say something about the value of, of murals to tourism. So, I hope that you will look at this as an opportunity. We can't delay it, because the artist has moved to Tennessee, and is a featured artist in Art Along the Rogue, she'll only be here until October. So, this is a really short-term, one-time opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much, Ward. I appreciate you coming up as representative of the Historical Sites and Buildings Commission. Any further questions, or we will go into discussion? You have a question for yourself?
Discussion.
Keep sending it, 'cause you're the one that presented it. Any further questions? If not, we'll go into discussion. Okay, we're gonna go into discussion, and I would bring it back to council for discussion or action. Joel, did you wanna add, or, let's let Rob go first. Go ahead, Rob, and then Joel.
Joel, I know that relations and history of Native American matters around here are important to you, and I really appreciate you taking the initiative, and I appreciate Rick's role in, I know, he's the liaison to COPA. So, somehow, the two of you guys, we ended up here today, I guess, because of the two of you, so I really appreciate that. So, you know, the fact that this is, you know, an opportunity of $3,000 is just, it's just almost be silly not to do it, because the value here is tremendous. I just wanted to go back, you know, people are talking about, could these existing murals be saved? They're all on corner ramps, so it's not even like one square in a sidewalk that could be pretty easily moved somewhere else. They all have slope to them for, you know, wheelchair and things like that. So, to move those somewhere else is pretty much almost impossible. And I can also say that, as good as those murals are, the fact that they're on the ground, looking down, to me, they're just not, they're just not appreciated as much as they should be. You know, there's, I'm right there on that corner every day, but the only one I'm really familiar with is the one I go over every day. You know, I can barely remember, you know, the Woolrich Corner and the Tacoma Corner, because they're down on the ground, you gotta walk over them. So, to have them up on an alley wall, to me, is gonna be, you know, 100 times more people will see them. They're gonna have 100 times more, more tourism value. And, you know, I would agree, too, that, you know, I, I mentioned this once before, a year ago or so, there's a HGTV show that's on a lot in my house, it's called Hometown, and it's about Laurel, Mississippi, and these people that remodel houses there. That town, Laurel, Mississippi, is known nationally for their murals. And it's a tiny little town, it had very, very low, very low socioeconomic base, they're rebuilding a lot of old homes, but the, the murals there are literally nationally renowned. And there's no, there's no reason why the Grants Pass murals can't, we can't get there someday. But this would be, for $3,000, a great next step, to be a town that's known for great murals.
Thank you, Rob. Joel?
So, another option for funding, whenever you do a project, you have what you call mitigation measures. So, if you have to move the electric lines, the project pays for moving the electric lines. If you have a, somebody's house, you pay them for the, for the house, maybe, because it's got destroyed. So, it wouldn't, the logic would be that if there's a project that's gonna, I, I really didn't know that that was gonna last only a year, otherwise I probably wouldn't have invested public money in it at all. But it's there, and this project will destroy it, and so it wouldn't be that far-fetched that the project costs, in terms of a mitigation measure, to keep that art would be $3,000, and relocate that art. That would be another option.
Any further discussion? Kathleen?
I need to disqualify myself from this vote, because she's my friend.
Thank you very much. Seth?
Yeah, I mean, I think public art downtown and throughout Grants Pass is super important. You know, if you go to any city that has art, it's always, you know, a nice sight to see. So, I'm gonna make a motion to just approve the 3,000, 'cause I think that, you know, like multiple people in here said, it's, it's a discount compared to, you know, what it could cost, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the $3,000 for murals, with a few seconds there, second by Rick and Victoria, so we'll choose one. Any further discussion? Joel?
And it's okay, but we also need to acknowledge that the other 3,000 will come from private donations, and this would be a good example of a city, citizen partnership.
Okay, thank you. Indra?
I, I would like to see if we can use the tourism dollars for this, and then keep on fundraising. Maybe the city can get a little more public dollars, that we don't have to put out as much, so up to 3,000, yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, you have a motion on the table, and a second to grant $3,000 for murals. We'll go through a roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
She recused.
Oh, sorry. And, let's just reiterate that Kathleen did upstate, I apologize for calling on you. Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Erin, do you have full direction?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, now, next on the agenda is addressing the homelessness grant, and I will hand the podium over to Stephanie. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Back before you today regarding some updated, I guess, discussion that needs to take place regarding our grant program. One thing I do want to make sure everyone is clear on before we start, is that we need to limit our discussion to process. We are not here to talk about details of any application, we are only here to talk about the process and what the council wants to do moving forward. So, as we all recall, just to make sure we've got a record of where we're at, on June 19th, the request for proposals for the Addressing Homelessness Grant Program was issued. In that grant program, the stated purpose was to alleviate the need for the city to allow persons experiencing homelessness to remain on public property overnight, and that the minimum to do so required capacity for 150 individuals, ADA compliance, that they be low barrier to entry, that they be managed 24/7, and fully operational within six months. Those were our minimum requirements that we wanted to see from our applicants. The amount established for the grant was 1.2 million dollars, but we did allow within the grant program that higher amounts could be considered in the city's discretion. The funding could only be used for capital expenditures and not the ongoing operation or provision of services. So, that, that was the grant program that we developed. We came up with the process that we were going to use to evaluate any applications, and I'm going to walk through kind of where we're at in that process, and what has happened thus far. Applications were due no later than four... We came up with the process that we were going to use to evaluate any applications, and I'm going to walk through kind of where we're at in that process and what has happened thus far. Applications were due no later than four o'clock PM on July 18th of 2025. Um, as part of any bid opening, we would normally say these, this is the applicant and the amount that they bid, so that's what we have done here. In alphabetical order, the four applications we received were from Elk Island Trading Group, LLC, Geodomestic LLC, Pathways to Stability LLC, and Tender Technologies. And you can see the amounts that they included in their proposals. Those applications were distributed to the review panel, the five-member review panel, and along with the objective scoring sheets. And all the applications were to be scored prior to our meeting, um, based on the information that was provided within those application materials. The panel met on July 21st to discuss the scoring, applications, and the city department feedback. We had asked, um, the departments to advise if there were any concerns or any, um, I guess, eligibility problems with the application. So that information was all provided to the panel as part of its discussion. One thing to note is that, at that time, none of the four applications met all necessary criteria. So the criteria that we have, that we previously talked about, not a single one satisfied everything. All necessary criteria means the minimum criteria for the program or that one or more of the required application components was lacking, not necessarily missing, but lacking. One application was removed for, from consideration as non-responsive. They failed to respond to most of the application's components and would not provide details without a nondisclosure agreement, so we disregarded that application and removed it from consideration. With the other three, even want, uh, with the scores, the panel did not believe that there was sufficient information to make a recommendation at that time. And specific follow-up questions were developed for the three potentially viable proposals. Those follow-up questions were sent to the applicants and they, um, I believe on the 22nd, and they had until noon on the 31st to respond to those follow-up questions with the additional information. That information was received but from all three applicants and distributed to the panel, which again met on August 4th to discuss the follow-up questions. Following that meeting, well, I guess, at the end of that meeting, the majority of the panel believed that only one applicant could meet the minimum criteria that we've talked about, the, what the city was requiring from any applicant. We wanted to verify that there was, in fact, an agreement with the landowner and MOUs and begin the contact, contract negotiations. Um, also, following that meeting, I requested updated scoring sheets so that we could verify that our discussions, in fact, and the scoring reflected where the panel was going before the formal recommendation was made to council. Since the panel review, um, there's been some, I guess, things that the council needs to make some decisions about. Um, we did, as I've addressed before with this group, um, we did receive further information from one of the applicants. Um, this is concerning because it was unsolicited and not in response to a specific request for clarification. Um, it was not consistent with the RFP process. Um, we had deadlines and all applications are to be assessed on the established criteria. Um, and, I mean, really, you don't get to just continue to update your applications with information as things progress. So, um, it is concerning that we are, that a typical RFP process is not being followed, um, at least not by outside entities. There have been a number of pushes to allow for additional information, which is why, part of why we're here today, is we want to make sure that the process that we're following ensures that the, uh, right outcome for the city is coming forward. Um, not all of our scoring sheets were, updated scoring sheets were see, were received, and without those, there's going to be questions about the validity of the process. So if we're going to proceed, we need to make sure we have those, uh, updated scoring sheets submitted. Um, as I noted, the landowner agreement verification has not yet been received. I don't, I think that's going to be an issue, just that's where we're at as of today's date. Um, and we've had some concerns expressed that the decision would be made on incomplete information or that the process has not been transparent enough. Um, as, as many of you who've been involved in grant processes know, um, a grant process is supposed to be completely insular. You get your packet of information, you make your decision based on the information that you received, um, and that's what we should be dealing with. But if an applicant chooses not to submit all of their information, um, does that really cause problems for our process? Um, I would also note that this is a standard grant and RFP process that we, that we have been following, um, there's nothing out of the ordinary at this point. That being said, we do have a potential recommendation. So the process, as I noted, has been conducted as outlined in the grant RFP and pursuant to standard procurement processes and rules. We can continue to move forward with it, and if we do, I would anticipate a contract on council's agenda likely for September 3rd. I would anticipate that we can be ready for that. Um, council would hear the basis for the recommendation and have the ability to evaluate the recommended proposal and agreement before deciding, uh, what it wants to do with that application. However, if the concerns that we, that I addressed on the previous slide lead you to believe that the process will not yield a proposal that meets the city's needs, then the recommendation would be to cancel the existing RFP and reissue with additional requirements that may hopefully alleviate the need for, um, having to go back for the follow-up questions. These are the, some of the points that we had concerns with as far as the need for follow-up. Um, and remember, as we discussed this, that our decision should be about the process itself, not the applicant, not who may or may not be recommended, not who may or may not have been excluded, but the process and whether it's what we want to follow. Um, all of the recommended reissue process would do is essentially make some of the factors more hardline, and it would mean that council would be in the public eye, um, assessing and evaluating the actual applications themselves. If we were to, um, essentially reissue the grant with some additional components, my anticipated timeline would be, uh, that we would cancel the RFP this week, uh, reissue the grant probably by the end of the week with a due date on September 22nd, uh, at which point we would make sure we got the additional information, and it would be back to council for its review on September 29th. Um, and then, which would essentially with the six months after we could get a contract done, probably April 15th for fully operational. And I believe this would extend our timeline about two months beyond where we're currently at. So with that, your options today are to direct staff and panel to move forward with the current process, as I noted, that is a viable option. You can direct staff to cancel the current RFP and schedule further discussion regarding options for meeting the city's needs. We can come back and have a more in-depth discussion about grant program or other potential options. Or, as we noted, you can direct staff to cancel the current RFP and reissue with additional and/or clarified requirements. So that, that's where we're at for today.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring it back to questions, um, from the council, but I'm gonna reiterate that all questions and all topic and all discussion needs to be directly engaged in this topic and the process of the grant program. There will be no mention of any applicants in this discussion, and please keep the decorum to a, to the highest regard. Please don't tell stories either, please, let's keep this going. With that, um, I'm just gonna go down the list here, we got Seth, Kathleen, and then Rob. Seth?
Yeah, so currently, with the current setup, um, there, there's obviously the scoring panel that's scoring these, right? So is the intent that you would then deliver one option to council? How's the highest score?
As of right now, the panel would be making a recommendation based on the scoring and the discussions that happened around that.
Would council be able to see the rest of the applicants?
No, those are not public information until after an award is, the, an award decision is made. So you would only be, you would be evaluating whether or not the recommended applicant meets the needs of the city.
Because that's where I don't, you know, canceling it doesn't sound like a great option, um, because we've already made this much progress, but I guess, and maybe in the beginning I was a little thrown off. I mean, to me, it seems like if I'm gonna be the one voting on, you know, who to, I, I, I understand the scoring committee, but I don't really agree with the fact that we can't see the remainder, even, even if they hypothetically scored low. So that's my only concern, you know? I guess if we have to cancel it to redo that, that's the only way to go, although I, I think council should have, um, eyes on... Well, I guess I just did ask my question, I'm just saying.
I, I would note that no other RFP is handled that way. All other RFPs are evaluated and scored, and you are only presented with the final, uh, recommendation that comes out of that.
Okay.
Thank you. And as Rob reiterated, let's keep this the question time at this moment in time. Um, I had Kathleen, Rob, and then Joel. Kathleen?
So my question is, Stephanie, um, why do we have to draw it out a whole new, another month when, um, it's pretty clear what's being asked, and I would, I was wondering why we can't do a shorter timeframe?
Because if you are going to issue an RFP, you need to give any applicant sufficient time to do an application. If you shorten the timeline to, however, whatever small amount you want, you're basically excluding anybody that hasn't already applied. So you want to make sure that even new applicants would be able to apply for the reissued opportunity.
All right, and I have next, uh, Rob, Joel, and then Victoria. Rob, and then Indra.
So, um, Stephanie, I'm not, you know, very familiar with RFP process. Um, when, uh, we have the original deadline, and then, um, I'm not really familiar with a, a follow-up time period. Could you give us examples of what kinds of questions had to be asked for follow-up?
Mostly clarification, um, so something about, uh, I'm trying to think of a, a way to do it, details of a budget. Um, there, there may have been this, but we wanted this, so we asked for some clarification on that. Um, clarification regarding compliance, how something would comply with regulations, um, whether or not alternative sites had been considered, those kinds of clarifying questions. So it, it all had to do with information that they had provided, and then we just sought further details to make sure we really understood.
Okay, so the details were basically for the scoring panel to, yeah, for clarity for the scoring panels?
Correct.
And it wasn't new stuff?
Correct.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that, um, not all the updated scoring sheets were, were resubmitted. So there were five scoring sheets, correct?
Yes.
And so, did, did one not come back, or do we have a reason that one didn't come back? And who, who was it that didn't resubmit? Was it a staff member?
I think I'd prefer not to answer that question. Um, just that, in, not all of the scoring sheets came back and we, in order to make sure that those verify it, we need to make sure that that comes in.
Okay. So is there any reason that we couldn't move forward with one scoring sheet absent?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Joel?
So, Rob, I was one of those scoring sheets, and the reason I didn't, because I had a, a previous conversation about reissuing the contract, and I didn't want to waste my time. Uh, and maybe I should have gone ahead and responded, and I, and I still can. Um, so I was one of the two. Um, on that, uh, Stephanie, the existing process that you see, is there any grounds for a successful appeal based on our existing process?
Not that I can see.
Okay, so then, um, why would we not proceed with the existing process of where we're at?
That is council's decision.
Okay.
Uh, I got Victoria, and then Indra, and then Rob. Victoria?
So if we are to, uh, direct staff to cancel the current RFP and it is reopened, it will basically be the same, um, it will basically be the same. It wa, it won't be changed in any significant way, is that right?
Unless council wants to change it in significant ways, that will, again, delay the process because that will take us more time. If council wanted to, the, the ones that I had up on here, those would be easy changes that I don't think we would need to have another meeting to address. If there were any other changes or revisions, we would need to workshop it and make sure that we, everybody on the panel was, uh, on the same page as far as what we were asking of our applicants.
And if we, uh, are to do that, then when the applications come in again, it will be the recommendation that council see and score all of the applications publicly, correct?
Given how things have played out and the pushback that we have gotten on some of the aspects, I, that would make the most sense at this point to, you know, if, if the issue is that things are happening behind the scenes and that nobody understands the reasoning why it's happening, then having that happen in public, it's messy, and it, I've never seen it happen with an RFP, I've never seen anything handled that way. Um, but it is an option.
So that would be an opportunity for the public to be able to see, uh, to see every app, application along with every counselor?
Correct. And I, I will warn you, it may mean that we do not get all applic, that we don't get all potential applicants, because if they're advised that aspects of their applications are made public in advance, um, that may chill their desire to apply for the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I got Indra and then Rob.
So Stephanie, I just want to clarify some things and, uh, just let me know yes or no, this is what I have. So we developed a process, council.
Correct.
And we spent hours doing that, and council voted unanimously to approve this process, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then we selected, because we felt like we wanted to be involved in some way more, I guess, we selected two counselors to represent the council on this panel, correct? And then, um, the panel used objective criteria that we voted on and approved, correct? And then, um, the panel sought clarifying information.
Correct.
The panel got, uh, information after the deadline, so I, you're familiar with RF...
Uh, oh, let me clarify that. The panel did not get additional information afterward. I received additional information that was not distributed to the panel.
Because?
Because that's not proper RFP procedures.
Okay, and then, I don't know, you're fairly new in our city, so Aaron might have to answer, but, um, have you ever had issues like this with an RFP?
No, not like this.
What do you think was different about this process that is causing this confusion and the, the, maybe going back to actually cancel it? Have you ever canceled one before after reviewing?
You know, we've had some where there's been non-responsive. There may be a history where we sent an RFP out and there was nothing that was really responsive, we had to change the RFP, but the, that would be based on the, uh, respondents and not being able to fulfill the potential criteria we're looking for.
Okay, what do you think?
I don't know, Jason, do you have anything else to add on that? I'm, I'm, we're pretty good with, with doing RFPs, we usually get...
Yeah, the ones we've had to cancel, either the scope was ill-defined and the proposals that we received were all well outside of our budget, and so we would have to bring those back and re-scope, um, what we were asking for to try and get it better defined, because if the scope isn't really good, your proposals will be all over the board. You know, it'll be like a shotgun where the fire chief thinks you're asking for one thing, the police chief thinks you're asking for another, and J C thinks you're asking for a third. Um, but in general, when the scope is pretty well-defined and then you do the follow-up for the, for the clarifying questions, we've never had to cancel one on the, like that.
Have you ever allowed information to come in and be distributed after the deadline?
In public works, absolutely not.
And, um, have you ever had a review panel member refuse to complete scoring? Or not cooperate?
Not that, not that we're aware of.
You turn in the scores and they cannot agree with the rest of the committee, they still factor in. Um, we've had that before.
Okay. What do you think was, was there anything different or unusual about this process that is making us come back to even consider this?
Thank you, I think it's Stephanie was saying, just from a historical perspective, we've, we're just following, uh, procurement law and established practices when it comes to RFPs and our grant processes.
Thank you.
And we got Rob?
Okay, so, um, clearly there's an undercurrent here that I'm trying to understand. Now, um, uh, at least that's my perception. Now, the, uh, while Stephanie says that we could move forward, she's legally com, uh, comfortable, uh, confident that we've, uh, done the process appropriately, and yet, the recommendation from staff is to cancel the existing RFP without an award. So why is that? Why the disconnect?
I think it's primarily the pushback that's been received and the number of, um, the number of different... the number of different ways that we're being told that we're not doing things correctly.
Okay.
So we can combat that, and as long as council is comfortable doing, moving forward, we can do that. But there's been a lot of, I guess, other undertones as well, that suggest that the process, although it's legally supportable, isn't exactly what council wanted.
Okay. So I read my council, mayor council email regularly. What form is the pushback taken? I haven't seen any emails about pushback on process, not from a counselor, not from the public. So...
They didn't, they didn't go through the mayor council email. It came directly to staff.
Directly to staff?
Yeah, as opposed to through mayor council email.
Okay. So is that, is that, is that a public record? It goes directly to staff?
Should be.
Okay. Can we know what those are right now? And who they came from?
I have a lot of emails to go find them in.
Should we take a recess, Clint, if she's going to be a while, or?
Stephanie, how much time do you think you need?
Minute or two.
Okay.
Stephanie, I've got them here on 8/8/2025, it looks like.
If you've got them, do you want to?
So go ahead and read them?
At least, maybe just who they came from, and if there's any brief summaries?
We had...
I would caution you, if some of those, of the subject line, because I think I was advised, there were a couple of them we're not...
I can't read them, but I did, I can't, I guess Stephanie and I can say, we can confirm, we did get three, at least three that I'm seeing here, with regards to processing the grant from Council Marshall, Council Shogul, and Council Crone.
And I will confirm to you, Rob, that I actually had a face-to-face meeting with Stephanie, as well as with Erin, after I had received comments that were not from any counselor. Those comments actually came from the public, knowing more about this process than I personally. So those concerning voices from the community, I brought up to Stephanie, as well as Erin, in a face-to-face meeting, individually. And I believe other counselors have had meetings with Erin in regards to this topic. Do you have clarification on your answer?
So in summary, then, we had three counselors that felt the process wasn't appropriate, or something, had a problem with the process. And then you're saying that some members of the public also didn't have a, they also had a problem with the process?
Correct. And members of the public knew more about what went on than they should have, and that I knew. There was conversations with council members and myself that were directly involved in the scoring process as well. They had contacted me with their concerns, and I heard their concerns. Do you have clarification on your question?
I do, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Rick, and then Indra?
So Jason, if you have a road, and you're putting it out to bid, that's an RFP?
It can be. It also can just be a direct bid. What we would put out for RFPs, or similarly for engineering services, things like that.
Okay, so what would be the consequences if you put out an RFP, and you had 10 responses with dollar amounts, and you felt that you wanted to cancel that RFP and come out with a new proposal? Do you anticipate you would lose certain number of those applicants, because all of a sudden, I want to say, they're feeling jerked around, or, and what it would, do you see that we could be creating an atmosphere for applicants that could be contenders to not even apply to the city?
Yes, to all of the above. We, in public works, if we were going to cancel a, which the city has the absolute right to do, we put that in all of our RFPs. So you have the right to cancel it for any reason. If we were going to turn it around and put it back in, we would significantly change it in some way. We wouldn't just put the same RFP right back out on the market, because of what you just said. Without really a substantial change, everybody's going to look at it and go, well, wait, you just put this out, we bid on it. But that would be our response. We would restructure it in some way, change the bid deadline, change the terms of the agreement, change the scope of work, one, something along those lines.
Thank you. Indra?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on Rob's comment. So I did go and speak about the RFP with Stephanie and Erin today, because I was shocked that we've been rushing, rushing to get things done, and now suddenly, there's a recommendation for cancel. I understand that that recommendation is not because you think anything was wrong with the process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I am willing to state that that's why I went to see and had concerns about. So I would like the counselors who had concerns, if they're willing to share what their concerns are, I would like to know that.
We are still asking questions, so I will leave it up to that. And Rob?
Just very briefly, Erin, on the, did those three emails from the three counselors, did they happen to come in on the same day?
Let me check here.
Looks like it was over two days.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Eric?
Not a question, just a comment.
We're not in comments just yet, so...
I'll wait until then. I just found some important information here.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions in regards to presentation from Stephanie, or any questions in regards to the process of the grant? Indra?
Yes, I have a question. It was mentioned about canceling, but keeping everything the same, so we could move forward quickly. So I don't understand that. What would be the point of canceling and keeping everything the same?
I'm not saying keep everything the same. As you'll know...
No, you didn't say that. A counselor said that.
It would be, I would suggest some additional requirements. These are some of the things that would, I guess, address some of the things that we had to follow up on, as from the panels, getting some additional details. I would recommend that the minimum criteria for consideration must be met. So we didn't really frame it that way in our first grant, and, like I said, not all the applicants were able to meet the, those minimum criteria in the timeframe established. If we make that a automatic disqualifier, that's a different thing. That would be a substantive change. I would recommend a hard number for funding, that we set it at this number. We're not offering any more than that, which was something we didn't, we'd do in the first place. I would require a written acknowledgement of intent to convey property from the landowner submitted with the application, something signed by the landowner, saying, yes, if this grant funding is awarded, then I will do blank, so that we know that they really do have all of their ducks in a row. I would require some further narrative to kind of get more detail about how they will comply with city and state regulations, and in particular, the transitional housing code. We want to make sure that that is met. And require references and examples of successful similar projects. So if we require those things, that would be a substantive change to it. I think that through the clarifying questions process, we were able to get most of that in one way, shape, or form. But if we're going to cancel and reissue, actually putting those components into the grant program would make sense, and that would be a significant change that would justify it.
So the clarifying questions were, were those kind of questions? They were getting more information from them. Do you feel like, because the scoring had been done, because council members had seen the scoring, and community, I guess, knows some of the, I don't know, I've not heard the scoring personally, but do you feel like that could be a real, really unfair disadvantage to someone if we put a new RFP out, who's newly putting in an application, because we have some organizations that already know a lot of the information? Is that an unfair advantage?
I don't know what information's out there about the process that's happened behind the scenes. It shouldn't be. So what should happen is they fill out an application. Every time I have responded to a grant, and I've been doing grant work, I've written applications for grants for 15 years. The way you go about a grant is, you basically make a checklist from your grant program, and you make sure you dot your i's across your t's, and answer every question, and provide as much detail in there as possible. That's how it should be approached. Which means that the past applications should be irrelevant, because the only thing you should be scoring, if you came back on a new grant, the only thing you should be scoring is what's within the confines of those application materials. And you take, you can take specific examples and apply it to your scoring. So it should be self-contained when it comes to a grant review.
Just one more question. So you mentioned, things are still ongoing. Is that correct?
Nothing has been stopped. We're, we've been, we wanted to, before we take any next steps, we're going to get councils weigh in today, but we were kind of running both simultaneously, with the knowledge that if council says stop, we will stop.
So you've still been communicating with the highest scoring entity, or?
With the one that came out of...
To get the information back, is that correct?
With the one that came out of the recommendation from the follow-up meeting, yes, we're still in communication.
But you have not received updated scores?
Correct.
But you could ask for those to be turned in still?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Eric, question?
I think it's important to see on page five there, the application review questions, why we're here in this situation. No application met the necessary criteria. One application was removed for consideration as non-responsive. Panel did not believe there was sufficient information to make a recommendation, and then specific follow-up questions were developed for the three potentially viable proposals. So the question is, why are we, why is this on the presentation if it's not true, or if there's an issue with it?
It is true. This does not make any part of the process erroneous. What this means is, we went back to get those clarifications, got the follow-up information, that we can continue to move forward, rather than stopping the process and restarting it at that point. Get the clarification to make sure that all the details were received.
So those are viable, those are viable questions to ask, and that's the reason we're here today, right now, talking about this.
Any further questions? Indra?
And once you received the clarifying questions back, did you feel, did the panel, as a whole, the majority, feel like you did have a qualified candidate?
That was my understanding from how we left the meeting, is that the majority of the panel was in support of recommending one candidate.
Further questions? Eric?
Since we're talking about public information, I wanted to know if we can bring forward an email that was sent by one of the candidates on August 7th, which is what my concern was, which is why I generated an email specifically to Stephanie, our lawyer, Erin, and the mayor, because I wanted to make sure that I was in the correct, I wasn't 100% sure. So I think this was, this is important. So I wanted to see if that is something that we could bring forward, since we're talking about public information and emails. So that was by one of the candidates, and they addressed some very big concerns. If you, if you see what that is. You want me to just read it from who it's from?
I'm not sure that I received that email. If you can tell me a timestamp, or let me know when it...
I'm looking for the time. I can't find it here. Let's see. Here we go, 12:56 on August 7th.
Before anything's read, we would need to review that email to see what the context was.
Transparency and open communication by the candidate.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on my emails.
I'm not sure I received...
Thursday, August 7th, 12:56. Looks like that was addressed to, looks like it was just, just the counselors.
Okay, so we did, we have not received that email. Staff has not.
Would you like me to forward it?
Oh, sure, you certainly can.
Yeah, it would be, have to be reviewed before it's read in, in public. Any further questions? Are you okay, Eric, with staff looking at that and getting back to you?
Yes, absolutely. I think timeliness is, is very important right now.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Especially if we've been accused of doing something that, yeah, if we've been, since we've been accused by our own folks here.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions. Did you want to add something, Eric?
I just need to add, I'm not, I'm not sure, there's, I haven't heard of any accusations by, and I want to be clear that I don't think Stephanie, or...
Not by staff.
Okay, since we don't have any further questions, I will allow Stephanie to exit the podium, and we'll bring it back for a discussion. In regards to discussion, I am going to remind you that we will not be discussing applicants by name or venture in this topic, in this discussion. This is a discussion in regards to the process of the grant, and what you guys want to do with going forward. And we do have a little borderline accusations going on here. I do kind of read that into it as well. So I'm not going to allow counselors to beat each other up, so please stay above board in your comments, or I will ask you to stop. Further discussion? Kathleen?
Okay, so that extra information was vitally important. I was not, as a scoring member, I was not told that there was a deadline when information could be, continued to be received. So at our second meeting, I guess it was August 4th, I had a huge question about, okay, so I have to say, the applicant that scored the highest was not the one that came out as the recommendation. That, to me, was a big red flag. We've got two different things going on here. So I had, of course, further questions, and it was about the, specifically about, okay, where is that? The successful similar projects. I'm fully aware, because of articles printed in both The Courier and The Eagle, and different podcasts that I've been seeing, about how the result of radicalized policies in useless NGOs, it's a very big concern for me to, to get the right candidate that is not trying to produce an industrial homeless complex. We want a candidate that has the right intentions, has the, the basic understanding of how to manage a site, and how to have a, something that's going to serve the best interest of the city. So the discrepancy between the highest scoring applicant and the one that... So the discrepancy between the highest scoring applicant and the one that was recommended, it was like, I need more information, and unfortunately, it happened at this deadline. So of course, I was not, not able to continue submitting my scoring sheets without this extra information.
Any further discussion? Indra?
Yeah? Oops. I will just say, if anyone thinks there's accusations, I don't feel that anyone's throwing accusations. We're just, you know, we just want to understand what's happening and what's happened, and, so that we can go forward with this. And so I would say I have confidence in the scoring, in the objectivity. I have real concerns of the process just coming to a halt because of pressure from several councilors, who may, I say may, have a bias as to who gets the winning vote. I don't, I don't care who gets the winning vote, I'm willing to listen-
Okay, so, Indra, I do have to stop you there, it's like, there's, there's, there's a little contention going on here, and I just really want you guys to be above board.
I'm trying to be above board.
You're already, you're already throwing accusations out, that people have a bias against them. I don't want to discuss bias, we're here to discuss-
Maybe you have a bias against me, and you don't want me to talk.
No, I have asked you to tailor this discussion to the process of the grant, and if you can do that, I would, I would absolutely appreciate that. Continue.
Well, it is part of the grant, okay? So I, you know, I would like to see what the review panel, who spent a lot of time, we passed the things, Stephanie believes things were done objectively, and I would like to see the result of that and not just have it shut down. Just be, and I'm not even saying I would vote yes for the grant, period. I'm not, I mean, we have to determine that, but we won't know until we get the information at a meeting and can discuss it and vote on it. And so I think we have been living with this a long time, and it's been since February, rush, 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 to get something done. Everybody wants something done, everyone. No one should live that way, and we want to help, and that's why we're doing the grant. And so to shut the process down and waste all this time, to me, is unconscionable. I don't know why we just can't go forward, listen to the presentation, discuss it, and get information. I think we're wasting a lot of time just by shutting it down, and I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair to the applicants, all of them who've applied. I think there's questions of transparency and integrity in the process. There could be legal or policy considerations, and I just think it's not, shutting it down in itself is not transparent, so that's all I have to say.
Erin, do you want to weigh in on something?
Yeah, I just want to, obviously, I can appreciate the spirit and the passion behind this discussion, because it is probably one of the largest policy decisions that this grants past council has had to make in the past five years, because this has a, a big potential impact on your community. And I think there's definitely strong feelings, I think, to go either way, whether we continue the process, or we, we put a pause on this process and we move forward. I think if we could just all focus on the big picture, which is that best-case scenario at the end, where we have a service provider providing the services that we have right now, that we're doing in those, in those resting sites, that is, that's the key win. And how do we get this council and this community to be as supportive as possible with whichever process you do? There's going to be people that may feel they win, there's going to be some people that may feel they lose, but if we could put that aside, and we could say, okay, what is going to get us the, the best win, and how can we get the majority of council to support whatever process we move forward with, the community will see that as, as a win. So just want to help keep that in perspective.
Thank you. And we're going to go into further discussion here. I do hunt, well, to do make a, a comment myself, is there was councillor members in previous workshops and meetings in this last month that were expressing their concerns about transparency through this grant process, arguing that it was hard to make a decision without each councillor actually seeing the applications. There was a very strong voice in at least one of the meetings or workshops in that, and now that seems to have, that voice is not as strong on that topic, but you do have the community that's kind of reaching out with that topic, so just to keep that in mind. And further discussion? I have Rob, Victoria, and Eric, and then Indra. Rob?
Seth.
Oh, and Seth.
I said that before me.
Sorry, Seth was, all right, let's do this again. We got Rob first, we got Seth, we got Victoria, Eric, and Indra, or Indra and Eric. Rob?
So Clint, when you say that we've got members of the public that have reached out to you, or whatever, I would imagine that most of us up here, but certainly you, would know that sometimes a little bit of thick skin is required, because it makes no difference how we eventually solve this problem, absolutely no difference. It's very unlikely that we'll have a unanimous vote. I would say that it's unlikely that we'll have more than 40% or even 50% of the public who does not approve of whatever it is, whether it's spending a penny on the homeless, whether it is, you name it, you know as well as I know that at least 40 or 50% of the public are going to be against whatever we come up with, even though we feel it's the right way forward. And so the fact that you'll mention a few members of the public, I didn't see emails to that effect, maybe they contacted you directly. There was one person who was involved in one of the groups that clearly has a bias, because it's his group, or the group he's involved with. So I, I don't, you know, the fact that a member of the public, or a few, are complaining about this, to me is, unfortunately, doesn't carry that much weight. If it were thousands, it might, if we had a room full, it might, but no.
And my thick skin is not on debate here, Rob, and you, it's, it is actually kind of rich that you talk about a few people weighing your, your decision when you-
Decorum now, decorum, keep it above board, don't attack me.
So basically, if, as my job as mayor, because I don't have the voting power that you guys do, is to field concerns from the public, and field concerns from councilors, and field concerns from applicants that are involved in our grant process, the only thing that I did in this case is bring those to the attention of the powers that be at our staff, which is our town attorney and our town manager. Getting involved with anything that has to deal with my thick skin has nothing to do with it. I could, I don't have a problem with the concerns. My job, as I take it, is to bring those concerns to the proper staff members and then address them, and that's what we did.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, to me, this, if we don't move forward with this, well, I'll say it, I'll say it this way, no one on the council can say that, that council were victims of the staff, or victims of Salem, or any other entity when we were doing this, when we drew up the grant. Council itself created the grant process, we went through everything with a fine-toothed comb, line by line. I personally remember making probably at least 10 suggestions on changes that council, council adopted, council agreed to the changes that I suggested, and I don't remember all the changes other people necessarily did, but, but we went through everything line by line. Council was totally satisfied with it, it was probably unanimous vote, and at this point, to then go back and say, but I didn't realize, or I didn't know, or something wasn't quite exactly perfect, I don't know, this isn't the right time for that. The time was when we were coming up with the grant, before we put out the RFP, before we scored, before we had the scoring sheets, and the fact that our city attorney says she sees nothing wrong with this process, as far as that it was, it was followed basically the way that council intended, and the way that she felt would be legal, I mean, I, I can't see unless, I appreciate that Kathleen did offer what her objections were, I'm not sure, there was two other people that had objections to the process, they have remained silent so far, but I, I haven't heard any reason to not, not move forward. And, and again, whatever, whether we go forward today, or whether we go forward two years from now, or two months from now, there's no possible way that all of the public is going to be satisfied, or all the council's going to be satisfied. But we did the process that we created, 100% on our own, and everyone signed off on it. Now it's just a question of putting on our big boy and big girl pants and moving forward.
Thank you, Rob, I got Seth next, Victoria, Indra, and then Eric. Seth?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make a motion right now. I think we should just move forward as is. I think it's two weeks out until the next meeting, so Stephanie, you said you could have-
I believe that we could have a contract for that September 3rd meeting.
It's only two weeks. I mean, I'd rather just go forward the process that, like Rob said, we all agreed on, and we combed through. And then, you know, I trust everyone up here to, to make a decision based on that information, you know, and that could be no, you know, we, we go back to the drawing board. So I'm, I'm just going to make a motion to move forward the current process, because again, we can sit here and go around and around and around, but, and we can cancel it, and we can take another month, but, you know, again, two weeks out, I'd rather just do that.
There were several other councilors who wanted to be heard on the issue, so I would ask a friendly amendment that that happened before there is a second on that motion.
We do have councilors that do want to weigh in and discussion, there is a motion on the table. I would give courtesy to other councilors that haven't spoke on this topic just yet, their time. The motion doesn't go away?
If we second it, there's still discussion after, after it's second, I'm going to second it.
Okay.
And then we can discuss.
All right, we're going to continue the discussion. We do have a motion on the table, I'm not to diminish your motion, Seth, I was just trying to make sure that we do give people ample time to discuss. So there's a motion on the table to continue through the current grant process as is, there is a second from Rob. We're going to continue discussion, and I have Victoria, Indra, and Eric. Victoria?
Yes, just speaking about the process, what came up today from Stephanie in the process, we did take a long time to put the grant together, but there are some suggestions that have come out of this process, that Stephanie has brought to us, saying, well, this should have been done better, this should have been done better, I'm paraphrasing, but these parameters should have been set this way or that way. And so, and I would also point out that this isn't a regular RFP, this isn't, you know, buying parts for our water treatment plant, this is different than anything the city has done. So it makes sense that the process would be a process that is being created as we go. And I would ask to be heard with my fellow council people, that there are, that there are obviously concerns, and it doesn't do any, it, it isn't going to, two months is the extension that it would take, and if we went this process, then the whole community would see, would see the applications, the entire board, the entire council would be the people who would be scoring them, and so it would be a very transparent process. It's very concerning, and so I, I don't believe that this, I do believe that we need to, to cancel this and open it back up again, because it is exceedingly concerning that members of the public knew more about this than, than councilors did. So for that very reason alone, extending it with some time is going to assure the public that this is a process that everybody gets to see, and that your eight elected councilors are the one, not, not to disparage anyone on the scoring committee, but that in an open format, where eight councilors who were elected are scoring, the public is going to be assured that the best, what's best for the city is going to happen. The concerns aren't minor, so it is my hope that people will not vote to go forward with the process, so that the process can be absolutely beyond a shadow of a doubt, the most transparent process for the community to see. And once again, then I would say again, that councilors making this decision in public transparently will be the best way to go, that in the process of this not regular RFP, in the process of doing it, it's a one, first time it's happened, and it might be a one-time deal, period, first, one and done, with something like this, that in the process, some more suggestions have come forward, that says, yeah, we, we might do this, and it would be better, we might do this, and it would be better, so, and it isn't going to be much of a delay, and to get it right for the city, I would just ask that we not go forward today, that we, and, and of course, it would be of great, it would be in fairness to all applicants as well, they wouldn't be disadvantaged in any way, and so that's the best way to go. So that's what I would ask would happen, and once again, I would say that the concerns aren't minor, so I would ask that we not go forward with it, and thank you.
Thank you. Indra, and then Eric, and then Joel. Indra?
Yes, first, I would like to apologize for my outburst, I am very passionate about this, so thank you, Erin, for reminding us about that. I'm, and so Clint, I'm so glad you brought up that a certain councillor, who was me, had grave concerns about transparency. I did voice those concerns at the last meeting. However, after that, I went to Erin, I got some more information, we had a conversation, Clint, and I, I told you at that time that I was very satisfied with what I heard, and I got enough information to be able to make a decision going forward. And we are elected representatives of the people, and I would hope that the people, even though the public might not get every single detailed bit of information, that they would trust, that I would take what I know, and that I would vote in the public's best interest to do what I think is the right thing to do. I just want the best candidate, we want to alleviate what's going on, and I, I would vote to go forward with the process. I think any more delay is so destructive to us and to our community, and I would just ask that we go forward with this and make some progress.
Thank you, Indra, for, for those comments. I do want to comment back to you, you just displayed that you had reached out and you got more information. That is the basis of the concern of councilors, other than yourself, in making their decisions, because nobody else has seen anything or heard anything. You did your due diligence, asked questions of staff members, that was great, but I think that is the root of the concern from council members, expressing to me, is that they don't have enough information to make this decision.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Can I respond to that? It's the same basic information that we heard.
Wait, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just basically saying, like, that's, that's what I'm trying to relay, is that is the root of the concern that was expressed to me, is that there, that the process was unlike what they thought it would be, and it, they feel like they're in the dark a little bit. That's all I'm saying, and that's not accusatory of you whatsoever, I understand what you said. Further comments, we have Eric, and then Joel. Eric?
Thank you. Yeah, as Victoria and others have mentioned on the, on the dais here, this, by, by canceling this, it will bring full transparency to the whole process, it will allow the public to see the entire process and the decisions made, the criteria, so I, I think- So I, I think it would be best to cancel it and start over, allowing the power to go back to the council as we were elected to do. There's been a lot of things that have transpired, and it just seems like a lot of things have been clouded, and the process has, has not been as objective or fair for a lot of individuals, for probably all of the, all of the applicants, because we see right here, again, I'm gonna reiterate, no application met all necessary criteria. One application was removed. Panel did not believe there was sufficient information to make a recommendation. Specific follow-up questions were developed for three potentially viable proposals. So there's, if we're, if we have that many questions and problems, maybe it's time to redo the process, close it up, and start over. That's my position. Thank you.
Further comments, I have Joel. And then Rick?
So, either process will work, and we spend a lot of energy debating it, which is okay. The one thing, if we do go with, with the existing process, I ask that I be given and Kathleen be given the chance to rate those changes in, in our scoring that we didn't do the first time, I think, because I wasn't sure that we were going to need that, but if we choose that option, Kathleen and I need to do that. The other thing that strikes me, I'm used to a contracting officer making these decisions. This is not a political decision, though it is, because we're all elected by the people and we all want to have it go our way. But there's some decisions by a government organization that need to be done, at least in my experience, by a contracting officer who knows contract law, who knows what's going on, gives everybody a fair chance, and it's not that I want Lumakazi to have it, or it's not that I want John Woods Logging to have it, or whatever, and that might be an undercurrent, and I'm not saying it is or it isn't, but I'm not used to dealing with elected officials getting this involved with a contract bid, because it shouldn't be a political decision, it should be a decision based on the facts of the application. And either way we move forward, we need to continue to keep it in that venue, because that, that has integrity, it has transparency, it has everything. So, enough said.
Further discussion, I have Rick, and then Victoria. Rick?
I'm in favor of moving forward. I feel if a no vote basically can set a precedent, I have serious concern that we will lose contenders. We could isolate ourselves as a city and lose qualified people who are actually no longer interested, and it can permeate to all levels of our contracts, so I will be in favor of staying with the current application, RFP. Thank you.
Further discussion, we have Victoria?
Yeah, I just want, because of a couple of things that I heard, I don't think that this is a political decision. I think it's a decision for, in the best interest of the city. It's a humanitarian issue, and, and in that vein, it must be, because it's so, we're, we're talking about human beings and their future, I think it's different. It's not, it isn't a political decision at all. And so I would just say once again that there are issues with, there are still questions out there, so, and very significant questions, that don't have anything to do with politics, but have to do with getting the best for a city, and, and also for it to be fair for all, for all applicants, every applicant, and if this were to go forward, there might even be more applicants. But it would be something that we would do with full transparency, which is something that has been asked on the dais that we do, so I am a big proponent of doing that, so that the community can see, because this is the issue that the, that the community is concerned with, and to go forward, once again, to stop the process, to reopen it, is not going to disadvantage anybody. There may be even more applicants, I don't know, but it's darn sure gonna be a decision that the city can see is absolutely transparent. So we shouldn't go forward today, because it is not, it just isn't, it isn't, it isn't the everyday process, because people have significant concerns, and they can be alleviated in a very short amount of time, so there shouldn't be any reason that people wouldn't want that to happen. I see all advantages going to letting this have a little bit more time, and a lot of disadvantages to say, oh, no, we're just gonna shut it down and go forward now. So I would urge my colleagues to give it just a little bit more time, and to get it right, so that everybody feels like it's right, and then we can't say that we didn't get it right, that we didn't give it our best shot. So I would urge councilors to vote to stop the process and reopen it, and, because it has the most advantages for everyone. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I got Joel, and then Rob.
And just taking a step back, one of the best outcomes that can happen is that everybody collaborates. There's a MOU requirement on this, so regardless of who gets it, I would hope that all the nonprofits are involved with the collaboration. And so if that happens, that's gonna be a very powerful statement to the community, regardless of who gets the award, and we'll go from there. In fact, it might be a blessing, you know, because I don't have to deal with the award, but I can just do my job. So anyway, my thoughts for stepping back.
Further discussion, Rob?
Yeah, Joel, that's a great point. I was thinking the same thing this morning, that from all the communications that we got over many months from one of the groups, from Pathways, it seemed as though they...
Please don't, please do not...
From one of the groups, thank you, thank you, from one of the groups, that it seemed as though what was in their heart would be that they'd be willing to work with anyone that was chosen, because that seemed to be their motivation, that they actually just wanted to help solve a problem. So thanks, Joel, for reminding me of that. Sorry, Clint, that I mentioned a name. There is only one group that has emailed us many times, though. The, you know, to me, at this point, I'm not really interested in any further delay of closing the resting sites, or any delay in creating a hygienic, safe, managed site. We went through a, a process, about a month process of drawing up the grant. We did what we had to do, and I don't think that we're going to ever have satisfaction with everyone in the public, or even everyone in the council, with what we, what we end up deciding. So, and I'm not interested in any further, any further delays for reasons that I, I feel are, don't have a great underpinning.
Thank you, Rob, for acknowledging that. I do reiterate, we want to keep this to process, discussion of the process of the grant only. Further discussion, Kathleen?
I'm gonna contend for shutting it down, because I think that if it's not shut down and reopened again, there will be applicants disqualified that are very capable, and I believe that this is more exclusive going forward than reopening and allowing everybody to have a fair chance at it.
Further discussion? We have a motion on the table by Seth, and a second by Rob, to continue with the process of the grants as is. Any further discussion? We'll go for a roll call vote. Victoria?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Kathleen?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Okay, we have five yeses and two nos.
Three nos.
Three nos. Apologizing, I'm not doing my math today. So the motion would carry with that, to continue on with the grant process as is. Stephanie, Erin, do you have full direction?
Yes, we'll be bringing that forward to you hopefully at the September meeting.
Thank you, and I thank the council for the robust discussion and to keeping it per topic. I appreciate that, and with that, we go on to the next item on the agenda, is agenda review. Does anybody have any questions, concerns in regards to agenda? Joel?
Well, I'm not sure where, if it's already scheduled there or not, but the funding for the, the grant, we haven't really discussed that, and I would like some of the proceeds from property sales to be part of that solution. So we need to put that on the agenda at some point in time. That's timely.
Yes, that definitely would be your next decision factor, based on going next, and that we will have that, and we can have that as an option for you when we have that discussion.
Any further comments or questions in regards to the agenda? Seeing none, that would...
Oh, I had one, I had one item on the agenda. On the very back of our agenda, we had a, it was brought up by, I think, at least two councilmembers, commercial activity in the parks. Just wanted to confirm that that is, do we have a consensus, or three councilmembers that want to have that discussion? I think it was put on the back, but with only two councilmembers, wanted to confirm that there would be three that are interested in having that discussion.
And that question did come about, just to remember, just to remind you guys, the, there was a correspondence in regards to ice cream sales in the park, so that might jog your memory on what, why that question, or why that was actually asked to be put on the agenda. So I would be looking for, per Erin's comments, I would be looking for consensus from council on scheduling that in a future workshop. So...
Well, it's not necessarily ice cream council, it's more the focus of...
No, that was just to bring it back full circle in your brain. And, Rob?
So before we schedule that, is it possible that Erin or Brad could send us an email as a synopsis of any reasoning that we have the current ordinance the way it is? Because that may explain to the, it seemed like there was one councilor more than others that wanted to bring that forward, and maybe if they got explanation for why it is the way it is, that would satisfy them. Just a thought.
Is that something that we can provide, Erin?
Yeah, to a limited extent. I mean, it was brought up two or three years ago with the previous council, that they wanted to explore the use of commercial activity in the parks, and whether that be a positive or negative, they did do a pilot project. I could try to put that in some kind of memo for you.
Seth?
I'm not against that workshop, but, I mean, by the time we get to it, it's already fall and winter, I mean, you know, winter's not gonna be a, you know, people are, I mean, they're in the park, sure, but not as much as in the summer, so I'd be for pushing that off a little bit, maybe even focusing on the municipal court, and we've had that on there for quite, quite a while. Just a thought.
Yeah, just to clarify, sorry, just to clarify the, the list of items that is on the back, those are kind of put in order of when we, when council had brought them up. So, yeah, the municipal court was, was ahead of that on agenda. We have discussed that numerous times in, in the agenda setting. That takes a lot of staff effort to bring information forward, since we, you know, don't have one in place in Grants Pass, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's a heavy research burden on staff, and so that one probably won't come up for a little while.
Yeah, no, we're, and where we're gonna, there's been another things that have been trumped some of Stephanie and I's time in regards to that, but getting back on the commercial activity in the parks, maybe we play it to where I provide you with a memo on the whatever background we have, and, and ask if you want to bring that forward to do so at a future council meeting.
Yeah, Erin and staff are just looking for a little bit more direction on that commercial activity in the parks discussion. Joel, and then Indra?
So I'm not sure I'm the Lone Ranger on this, but we've been working with the Parks Committee, and they definitely are looking at that as an option, and some other, other city committees are looking at it also, and it's actually something we've already done. So to have it be a, like, with, with some of our events that we've had, so to have it be a item all by itself, not associated with any individual project, I think would be probably a waste of time, because I think we got appropriate regulations that address it, and then when we get, get a particular opportunity that can help with economic development and our parks experience, and that, that we bring that forth, and see how that fits in with what, what our regulations are and where we go from there.
So I don't have direction.
No, because I just sort of heard...
The direction would be to continue to put it on hold, and if we get a, a single proposal that wants some kind of commercial activity in the park, that we compare it against our existing criteria and see if it fits, or if it doesn't fit, if we want it, then we would change, and it doesn't fit, then we would have to adjust it accordingly.
So what I'm hearing is it maybe sounds like there's no large push from a council on policy perspective to make any changes currently right now? And if that's fair, then we'll just remove that from the back of the agenda.
I guess let's just do a consensus of council to remove commercial activities discussion in the parks off of the list for future council workshops. We got a majority to say, take it off. Thank you very much for your input. Any further discussion in regards to agenda?
A memo explaining...
You still want the memo? Yeah, okay.
Indra?
And then I, too, would like to see the municipal court pushed up and put as a priority. So besides the homelessness grant, I think that would be my number two priority to get that going. And then, just a side note, we have such marathon workshops, and I'm wondering why we pack so much into our workshops, and, and is it really necessary? Can we really leadership look at that and see if there's a way, you know, we can reduce these workshop times in any way? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, your concern is duly noted. We do have a packed agenda today, because we, we felt it, there was such a lack of things that we were, we would be doing in Wednesday's public meeting, that we could simply address it in this workshop, as, as we would adjourn and go into a special meeting. Yes, we did understand that this workshop would be pretty heavily debated with the topics at hand. That was cognizant of us. The recommendation to move the Wednesday public meeting and deal with those items in this workshop was kind of done after this council, I mean, after this workshop agenda was set, so, yeah, I apologize for the, for the lengthy one of this, but just feels like we could all get it all done today.
Yeah, and I'm not complaining about this one, actually. Some are necessary, but it seems like every single workshop goes till three or four, so anyway, just something to look at. Thank you.
Yep, we do deal with a lot of stuff. So at this point, is there one last call for any comments or discussion about agenda? Kathleen?
Wondering, can you refresh my memory about the work plan third quarter? What was that related to?
The what?
Say that one more time, please.
Work plan third quarter. It's the one above commercial activity.
Yeah, that's just an update on, on how we're doing with the, the strategic plan, and giving you an update on activities that we've done.
Okay, last call for discussion in regards to agenda. Seeing none, I would bring it back to council... Seeing none, I would bring it back to council for a motion to adjourn workshop and convene a city council special meeting.
I move to adjourn and convene a special meeting.
Do we have a second? Second from Seth, first up there. Quick roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right. Current council workshop is adjourned, and we will be coming, convening a special city council meeting. Do I have to do anything to start that off? All right, we, okay, we do have one starred item on the consent agenda in regards to this special council meeting, and that starred item is Item H, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign Amendment 12 with Slayden Construction, Contractors, Inc., to Increase the Electrical Gear Pricing for the Water Treatment Plant. And I will turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item I requested to be starred. I know normally you guys request the stars on the consent items, but this is change order number one for the project, and I wanted to get it in front of you. By our purchasing policy, change orders are brought back to council when they are greater than 15% of the authorized amount, or greater than $100,000, whichever is greater by our policy and by state rules. Our thought on that was that probably not coming back to you until we hit the $15 million mark in changes was probably not warranted, so we wanted to get back in front of you with this first one, and let you know that we will be bringing you subsequent change orders that are of change of scope. This one is not involved in a change of scope, or just very significant, $1 million, $2 million in aggregate. So that was why I wanted to get in front of you. This one is due to the fact that we waited for brick, and as a result of waiting, the electrical contractor received four price increases from their suppliers, increasing the cost of the electrical gear, not the labor. So the electrical gear alone increased in costs by $880,000. Very unfortunate. So, thank you. And I will take any questions.
Council have any questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Erin.
No, no.
Okay, council have any questions in regards to Jason's presentation? Indra?
So, let me be clear, so unless the change orders are over close to a million, you're not going to bring them forward?
Yeah.
So we could have a bunch of $500,000 ones that we would never see, they'll just go through?
That is correct.
So the bit, it could be significantly over what we estimate the cost to be, and we have no recourse in that?
No. If we do, if it's within that 15%, when you approve the original budget, if you want to choose a lower number, I will come back to you with every small change order. I just think that we would be in front of you far too often. With a project of this scale, as you can see, just one item really did change the price. That's why I was saying, I'm likely going to be back to you when it's about a million or $2 million in aggregate, we're going to play those by ear, or when those change orders are due to a change in scope, where we've said, oh, we need to add or subtract this from the project. But when it's just a change in the material price, due to, say, a tariff goes into effect, and those get passed straight through to us, I would not normally bring those through to you unless it equaled to 15%. The problem with this project, as I said, is that the project is so large, that that 15% number is much larger than what we're norm, than we're used to. So I will be, I will use a lot of discretion, and I will be in front of you when I feel that we're crossing a threshold that I need to get in front of you for.
Any further questions for Jason? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get the consent agenda on the screen? All right, so you have a consent agenda as shown on the screen. I would bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. I would bring it to council for discussion and/or action. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion on the table to adopt the consent agenda as shown on the screen. Do I have a second? Joel, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Rick? Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. That would be all we have on the agenda for our special public meeting, and I would bring it back to council for a motion to adjourn special meeting and convene the city council meeting in executive session.
I motion to adjourn the city council meeting and to open an executive session.
Do we have a second? Second from Rick. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Joel, I mean, Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, our city council special meeting has been adjourned, and executive session is now open. Give me one second.